Ms. Breckus Lee, to send the pledge, please. Please rise, put your hand over your heart.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll observe a moment of silence.
Sheevy.
Here.
Breckis.
Here.
Zadra.
Delgado.
Dorch.
Jordan.
Kachel.
Here.
For the record, my name's Dick Barthollet. I'm here today representing the Regional Alliance for Downtown. I came this morning, or at noon, because I can't be here at 3 o'clock this afternoon, but specifically to make some remarks about the ACES situation. There's been, of course, as you know, great progress made in downtown with very significant public and private investment, including the Nevada Museum of Art, the Whitewater Park, of course, the Freight House District. And all of our neighborhoods in the general downtown area really seem to be making good progress, from East Forest Street to Midtown, the Riverwalk, Wells Avenue, Cal Ave. There's just significant improvements going on. The Board of RAD met and considered what was going on with the ACES, and quite honestly, we came to the decision, we didn't have enough information yet to weigh in one way or the other, other than to say the general consensus that we had was that this should not be a take it or leave it situation, it shouldn't be my way or the highway, that a compromise outcome would be the best for the city and for all the parties involved. We hope that you move in that direction, we encourage you to move in that direction, and through that perhaps show Washington DC folks how thorny situations can be resolved through some give and take and some compromise. So, that's from the Regional Alliance from downtown. We'll be looking more closely at this to see if we can come forward with something more specific, but for right now, that's our general feeling.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
For the record, Ed Hawkins, I want to ditto what that gentleman just spoke about, but take it one step further. The Board of County Commissioners agreed not to agree, so it's been put back on the Reno City Council's lap. As I was raised in the little town of Winnemucca, my dad taught me, as well as our other friends and neighbors' dad taught them, that when you make a commitment, you make it and you hold on to that, because that's just the way life is. Even though the Board of County Commissioners didn't take a positive vote on this and put it back in our laps, I'd like you to consider that we've got about eight years to pay off the moving of the two fire departments at 750,000 a year. Means we have to come up with about 250,000 for the next eight years. If we can go on some sort of route like that and renegotiate in eight or 10 years for the rest of the balance on the ACES, that would be great. But I believe that we've made a commitment. I know it wasn't made by the new city members, but we did make the commitment as a city of Reno, and I believe we need to stick by our guns.
Thank you very much. Ted Levatar?
Ted Levatter.
Levatter, I apologize.
No problem. I would like to address my open meeting law complaint regarding Agenda Item C4 from November 14th and the city's written response by Deputy Attorney, Mr. Shipman. The purpose of open meeting laws is to protect our right to participate. My complaint was not filed because I didn't like the outcome of the stadium agreement, but because the vague language of the agenda item had the effect of confusing the public and depriving them of their right to be an informed and active participant. First, I'd like to talk about why the agenda item was confusing. It has to do with the city setting our public's expectations for information and then not meeting them. Mr. Shipman conceded that the city could have done a better job with the agenda item. In his response, he stated the agenda item could have been more artfully worded. While artful wording may have done a better job of capturing what was actually done at that city council meeting that day, all that was needed to better inform the public was parentheses and the words Reno ACES. If you compare that to the November 24th and the November 7th agenda items, you'll see a big discrepancy. Clear and complete rule from the open meeting laws is vague, but the city sets what clear and complete means every time it puts out an agenda item. So when you put out agenda items that are inconsistent, especially on a given topic, it has the effect of confusing the public. The second reason it was confusing, this was the first time it was not a joint RDA, city council meeting. Mr. Shipman said in his argument that I should have known that the agenda item was going to be discussed that day, and he's right. I was expecting an agenda item, but I was expecting it as RDA and city council, not a city council alone. And the third reason this was confusing, every time we talked about the personal guarantee from Herb Simon, we talked about it as a personal guarantee. On November 14th, when you folks talked about it, it was talked about as a personal guarantee. The agenda item did not say a personal guarantee, it said limited guarantee. How was I supposed to know what a limited guarantee referred to when you never spoke of this regarding this agreement as a limited guarantee? You set our expectations and you need to meet them, otherwise you're going to cause confusion. I want to talk about why it was offensive. It was a six-page legal response to my handwritten complaint form. The bottom of that complaint form from the Attorney General's office asked that I do not use a separate sheet of paper, and I followed those rules. I had nine little lines and really bad handwriting to deal with, and an attempt to clarify to the Attorney General what had happened that day. Rather than reaching out to me to better understand my complaint, the city writes a six-page written response that I find actually offensive. And I'll talk about why I found it offensive. It wasn't offensive, I didn't find it offensive because the city insulted my intelligence when they called me ignorant in the written report. I found it offensive that the city insulted my character by insinuating that I had premeditated this complaint and manufactured it by not showing up to speak that day, even though I knew what was happening. The city needs to look at its public as an asset and not an adversary. This response from the city made me feel like an adversary. In all of the research I've done in regards to the rules of the city, everything you write says we need the public to participate in order to achieve the lifestyle the majority of our citizens desire. When you attack the citizens, we don't want to participate. And that's what makes me most upset about this whole situation, is it makes me question whether or not this participation is worth my time at all. I'm going to read from Thoreau. "As for adopting the ways in which the state has provided me for remedying the mistakes of this governing body, I know of no such ways. They take too much time and a man's life will be gone. I have other affairs to attend to, and I came into this world not chiefly to make this a good place to live in, but to live in a good place. A man has not everything to do but something, and it means he should not have to do something ineffective. I ask that you take it upon yourselves to remedy this mistake."
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Chris Olberg?
My name's Chris Olberg, lifelong citizen of the city of Reno. I'd like to thank your staff for putting a red tag on the Home Depot white roof because the conditions were very simple, non-reflective. Unfortunately for them, it cost them $300,000. But I don't care, they don't live here. And the other thing is, you're promoting buy local. Those people hired a contractor from South Carolina to put that roof on. A local contractor probably would have looked in to see if the roof was brown. Those people steal our money and ship it to Atlanta, Georgia, but they don't even shop at our house. But we give them everything. And they violate the rules every year. You know, this has been going on forever. And on my second note, I would like to be put back on the agenda for the trees in my backyard, which Home Depot bulldozed down 15 years ago, because I granted them an easement because we were all supposed to be good neighbors, right up until they didn't pay me the million dollars that I lay owed me for taking all their dirt and putting on the mountain, which you know about. And I want my trees put back on the agenda because the day I was on the agenda, the city of Reno came out and surveyed the easements I actually granted you people, and I did not want to miss the surveyors. So I canceled my appointment with you people to discuss this. And it has to do with hydro flows, detention ponds, and floods. And I think we all just dodged a big bullet. And I want to discuss this with you people, with your staff, so I can address them. The city attorney tells me the only way I can get it back on the agenda is if one of you say, "Put it back on the agenda." I turn to my councilman in my district, Dwight, and ask you to put my trees back on my agenda. I created a riparian area behind my home, above Home Depot, so the animals and the birds have somewhere to live. I'm pissed off that you came in my backyard and cut my trees down again.
Hi, Your Honor.
Thank you.
Hi, Your Honor.
Sir, sir, you're out of order. When it's your turn, I'll call on you.
Thank you, Ms... First of all, I want to ask, can you hear me now?
We can hear you, Mark.
Okay. Merry Christmas to all the city council members, everybody. Okay. My name is Mark. I'm here today to warn you about driving drunk and getting in the car as a drunk driver. This is the holiday season, and it would be a shame to ruin it for yourself and another person, so please don't drive drunk and get in a car. I'm reading from this because I suffer a traumatic brain injury and get off track and curse sometimes involuntarily. When I was a young adult, I had eight drunk drivings, 23 reckless drivings, 32 driving on a street license. I was a hoodlum. In 1989, we drank four gallons of wine and were on the way to get more. When we had a car crash and the police support said we were going over 100, we hit the curb and rolled eight times, going over 150 feet. I was ejected and the car landed on my head. I was dead at the scene, but when I got to the hospital, the doctors brought me back to life. I was in a coma for a month, in the hospital five and a half months more. When I was released from the hospital, I was wheelchair-bound, but the Holy Spirit helped. God willed me alive. God willed me alive to show what could happen if you get in a car as a drunk driver. I drink and drive. I can't walk anymore, I have to use a walker or an electric wheelchair. I can't ride, I ride the bus, I can't drive. I can't even clean my apartment. I can't find employment. I can't have a relationship. My life sucks. Now, I have trouble thinking and speaking. I have lost my wife and my family. I wear dentures now because I did drugs when I was young. It was years after I quit doing drugs that I lost my teeth, but the damage had been done.
Mark, you need to wrap it up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, that's all right.
Just don't get in a car as a drunk driver. Enjoy the holiday season and don't drive with your kids, don't drive drunk with your kids in a car.
Good message, Mark, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ed Posky?
Yes, Your Honor.
Yes, sir.
Hi, Your Honor. Hi, Mr. Councilmen, ladies. Let me say this, if I may. I'm retired from the federal government, I'm retired from the chief's unit, okay? Back in Detroit. Your Honor, let me say this, if I may.
Talk into the mic so that it can record it and stuff.
I retired from the federal government, okay? I went through divorce, I'm 65 years old, okay? I commanded to retire for myself. I'm going to tell you people something you're not going to like, okay? Over here, I got admission over here, okay? I paid a lot of money to stay motel rooms. I stayed motel rooms with the Hindu's, for $700 a month, with the bedbugs, okay? Okay? But you have admission over there, the people coming out of California, they can't get anything in California, mostly come here, destroy the city, downtown here, okay? They come back, all kinds of shit, okay? That's why people are afraid to come down here, spending the money with you people, because they're afraid of that. And I, as I said, this, Your Honor, young people, this is truth. I'm telling you truth, Mr. Bear, I'm telling you truth. Now, what you got to do, whether you can do it, or these people can do it or not, get rid of... Get rid of admission. You have to get rid of admission. The bigger people over here from California, pretend bucks a day. The bigger people here pretend dollars a day. They don't care about you or him or her, they worry about the $10 a day. They're bringing, this is your worst nightmare. Mr. Bear, I was raised in the city of Detroit. I've seen this stuff before when I was a little man, growing up in the city of Detroit. Somehow, you people got to get together and get rid of admission. The mistake they made, when you build admission down here, you should put it next to Penn Boulevard, because half the people should be there anyways, okay? You can throw me a show, Your Honor, or anybody you want, okay? I'm telling you truth. People are afraid to come downtown. I spoke to a guy yesterday, two days ago, I was on... Biden Lennas. He's a lawyer, okay? I know, he's a lawyer for Biden. His wife was afraid to go downtown, because of admission. You have to get rid of admission. I don't know how you're going to do that, and do it. People come out of Penn Tree, baby rapers, all kinds of shit, which you figure wait down here? That's all I got to say, Biden.
Thank you very much. Sam Denae?
Let me tell you something, Your Honor.
Sit down, please. Sir, you're out of line, please sit down. Mr. Denae?
Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia Reno Government. I'm Sam. I'll just catch my breath for a moment. At any rate, Sam is an Air Force Academy graduate, spent many years flying fighters and bombers, defending our nation against enemies inside of the border and outside of the border. And before I go any further, I've got to tell you right now, Johnny Depp has already called me. Johnny Depp has already called me, and he wants a licensing agreement for that Edward Scissorhands art that you have down there by the McCarran Freeway Offset, the big red one, the big red one. If you haven't seen it yet, you're going to see it. Johnny Depp wants some licensing fees from that movie he had, Edward Scissorhand Operation. Yeah, the city attorney's over there looking askance. You'll hear from him soon. Go take a look at it, you'll know what I'm talking about. And by the way, I add, first of all, and second of all, I'm not going to say anything about Reno's dysfunctional and corrupt media. No, I'm not going to say anything about the fact that the media around here is deathly afraid and jealous of Sam Denae because Sam Denae has too many good ideas that they don't want to report ideas. Sam has had ideas that would have saved this city from the horrible pickle it is in. And furthermore, I want to talk about what that gentleman said back here a few minutes ago when he filed an open meeting law complaint against the agenda items. And the open meeting law plainly says that the average citizen has to know what is being written on the agenda. And if you want to think he had premeditated knowledge of what was on there, I guarantee you, I've been to 4,327 government meetings, but who's counting? And that, there was no way that even Sam was going to know what was on that agenda. Why does the city attorney, and I'm not trying to pick on him, why don't they just admit it was wrong? Why don't they admit it was wrong, apologize to that person and the rest of the citizens because it was wrong? Anybody with logic, Nevekanesser, King Solomon, and Sam Denae all say it was written wrong. I dwelled in that too long. The baseball stadium, as I keep saying, the baseball stadium fiasco is a fiasco, and it shows you, it just goes to prove that the vote-reating Steelers have stolen the votes from the wrong people and then given them to the other wrong people. Look what we get. Nobody knows, nobody knows what's going on with that fiasco, nobody. Not even the gurus back in New York, Jerry, my good friends Jerry and Stuart. Last but not least, I want to say this. Mills Lane was just indoctrinated into the International Boxing Hall of Fame, and he's nodding his head. I guarantee you, there's one other person who deserves to be in there at least as much as him and maybe more, Dr. Edward Denae. Dr. Denae was instrumental in saving boxing from obliteration back in the 1980s when the American Medical Association was trying to do away with it. I followed him step by step and went to the hearings where he had to go nose to nose with hundreds, dozens and dozens of doctors who wanted to get rid of boxing. Dr. Denae saved boxing for Nevada, and that is a given fact.
Thank you very much. Having no other public comment cards, close the public comment section, bring it back to the table. There are no pulled items today, there will be a proclamation, item C1, presentations none, public hearing on item F1, we will be handling that today. Public hearing at 6 o'clock tonight. UNR Farms, the city manager requesting this item be opened and continued till January the 30th. And there will be a joint meeting of the Reno City Council and the Redevelopment Agency at 3 o'clock. Chair will entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
Mayor, I have a question. So, no one needs to be here at 6 o'clock? Oh, we have to be here?
We have to be here at 6 to open the meeting and then...
Open the meeting?
And then it will be continued.
Continued by this body?
By this body.
Will there be an opportunity to discuss that at that time?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Do I have a motion and a second for approval of the agenda? Have a motion, second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. City Manager, A5.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Do have one announcement to make today. I'm pleased to announce that the city of Reno has received its 17th consecutive distinguished budget award for fiscal year 2012, 2013. This award is presented to the city from the Government Finance Officers Association for a budget document that serves the city and its residents as a policy document, a financial plan, an operations guide, and a communications device. So I'd like to recognize and thank Kate Thomas and her staff for receiving this award again for fiscal year 2013.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I do believe that Councilwoman Jordan also has an announcement that she would like to make.
Okay.
Thank you. The city of Reno is helping out our seniors, citizens in need this holiday season by sponsoring senior giving holiday trees, and you've seen the Christmas trees outside of council chambers there, also on the second, in the second floor lobby. We encourage everybody to go out and grab a gift tag off the tree, and you can pick up all or some of the items on the gift tag, and there's information on there where you can drop those materials off. And please help our seniors in need this season and show them that they not only matter to us at this time of year, but all year long, so I encourage everybody to go grab a tree or two or three and help our seniors out.
Okay, any other announcements right now, under the city managers? Okay, thank you. This time, we'll go to A7, approval of the minutes for November 28. Any changes, anybody has? Chair will entertain a motion? Have a second? Have a second? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Cash disbursements, any disclosures? Chair will entertain a motion for approval. Have a motion, have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Proclaimations, Rick Bailey?
We have a proclamation, Mr. Mayor, regarding LV Lovett.
Staff didn't give it to me. Call upstairs and see if we've got one, have them bring it down, and we'll come back to this.
She had a phone.
All right. We'll come back to item C there. Item D, presentations, none. Consent agenda, we have three people that wish to speak. I will... Are there any items that you would like to pull for discussion?
Yes, Mayor, I would. Item E7.
E7. Okay. Anybody else? Anybody want to pull? Mr. Dorch?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I think we need to pull E17.
Any others for, to pull for discussion? Okay, we have three public comments. Mr. Denae?
Sam Denae, the Encyclopedia of Reno Government, and I've given a fairly cursory look at the consent agenda, and the consent agenda has to do with relatively supposedly mundane items, housekeeping items, that they generally vote on in one vote for all the items, although it looks like they're pulling a few today. For this, that's for the citizens out in TV land who do not know what the consent agenda is, and this time it goes all the way up to E19, not to mention a whole bunch of E1s. So probably 30 different items. And I have to commend the person who wrote this agenda because you can just about understand everything that is on this consent agenda. It's down to the fine tuning, down to numbers like $2,500, pointing out exactly where everything is and what the addresses are. In other words, this consent agenda is telling the folks, the citizens, the average citizen out there, it's telling the average citizen what is on the agenda, what the folks are going to be talking about. Unlike the agenda from a couple of weeks ago relative to the quote-unquote "baseball fiasco," I make the point on that once again. At any rate, I just wanted to segue in with that little theory. As a matter of fact, I don't know what would happen on that because the Attorney General would just write back and say it doesn't even matter because they'll just vote on it again, they'll get the same vote, so in all actuality, it doesn't even matter that they did it wrong or not. I noticed that on this, you're going to, you're going to provide $150,000, and I'm not speaking for or against it, $150,000 via a $2 room tax surge charge relative to some more construction on the bowling stadium. I don't know what that's all about, but, and this is phase two. What was phase, how big was phase one? I also want to make a quick comment about the fact there's going to be $46,000 provided relative to the Bowling Hall of Fame. Now, they've been talking about this Bowling Hall of Fame all of these years, and bowling is relatively popular... And bowling is relatively popular in Reno. I don't know how popular it is throughout the rest of Nevada. Certainly, it's not as popular as it is in Reno. But I'll tell you what is popular in Nevada and just as popular as bowling. And that is boxing. And if we're going to give time to a bowling stadium and money to a bowling stadium, I recommend a Hall of Fame. I recommend that we have a Boxing Hall of Fame. And as I said a few minutes ago, that Boxing Hall of Fame should have its first two or three members. Mills Lane, Dr. Eb DaNay, and maybe even Muhammad Ali and Sugar Ray Leonard. Dr. DaNay was a ring physician for something on the order of 50 world championship fights, not to mention thousands of amateur fights.
Much. Kim Rodemeyer?
Good afternoon. I didn't prepare anything. But I'm here for item E7, the approval of an interlocal agreement among the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, and the Regional Transportation Committee regarding permitting construction of the Southeast Connector at the Truckee Meadows Water Reclamation Facility. I can't stress again, and I've been here many times before, there is no permit to finish the road. And to spend $65 million for this section when it's not needed and you don't have approval to finish is insane. You guys all got my email from the other day. So I just want to reiterate now that $65 million for this several hundred feet of road when you can't finish it is, at this time, and probably not for the near future, is a humongous waste of money. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ed Hawkins?
For the record, Ed Hawkins, North Valley's Ward 4 Chair. Just want to talk about E17 real quick. There is no designation for zoning as of now. I'd like to see the council expedite the zoning of this property so we can get on with some building and put some shovels and mend the work. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have no other public comment. We have two items pulled for discussion, E7, E17. Any others you want to pull for discussion? The chair will entertain a motion to approve all the others. Have a motion? Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. E7?
Yes. Mayor, I will not be participating in this. I'm abstaining from discussion. I was not aware of this item coming before us until Saturday when I looked at my packet. It's an interlocal agreement between the city of Reno, the city of Sparks, and the RTC. My husband's employed by the city of Sparks. As we all know up here, that ethics issues are analyzed on a case-by-case basis. And I have not had the time to do that analysis in this situation. I anticipate doing it for other future interlocal agreements that would come. And after I do that, I will discuss with others who will advise me on how to act. So I'm going to step away from the table for this item.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments right now on item E7?
Yes.
Okay, excuse me. Yes, you pulled it.
No worries.
Go ahead.
So disclosure, running the campaign recently, there's been a lot of confusion among the community as to where we currently are with the Southeast Connector. And so if staff can direct us exactly where we are so we can get some clarification for not just the council up here, but for the general community. Currently, where we lie with that, is it a done deal or is it not? And as Kim Rodemeyer had shown just now, that it sounds like we're not.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. Current status on the Southeast Connector, the Phase 1, which is from Clean Water Way to the north. The contract construction manager at risk has been awarded. The project design is being prepared. I can refer some of those questions to members of the RTC that are, staff of the RTC that are also here. As far as permitting for Phase 1, that is in place for the permits that they need to construct that portion of it. Phase 2, the permitting for the Army Corps of Engineers is on an inactive status. The inactive status is due to the fact that they're looking at some alignment changes. They were doing a lot of work, proposed to do a lot of work along Steamboat Creek. Comments that came back through Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe wanted them to not do that disturbance, some of the work that they were looking to do in the Steamboat Creek because they were concerned with the mercury and possible contamination that could go into the river and to the Pyramid Lake. So with the comments that were received during that section, staff has, RTC staff and the consultant are reviewing changes to, potential minor changes to alignment regarding that. So that's kind of where it is. So yes, there is no permit. It's expected the permit process will be completed next November. The plan, talking to engineering manager, engineering director at RTC is that the project will be going out to bid late next year, early 2014, with construction to follow.
Okay. Thank you for that, John. So what we're doing today is permitting for the interlocal agreement over by the wastewater treatment plant.
The item in front of you today is an agreement staff was asked to work with RTC, city of Sparks. We own the Tom Wharf property jointly, so 50/50 with the city of Sparks. So the item before you today is actually for us to delineate what the contractor or RTC need to have access to construct the roadway. They will, it's a construction easement for that. There's some interference with, or some, our large interceptor pipes that go into the treatment plant. There's some protection of those facilities. That's included in the agreement. There is a pump-around by those that are being constructed that the RTC would be paying for. There's also an amount of material that they will be, the contractor will be taking from the Tom Wharf site to use as fill for the project site. That benefits Tom Wharf and the RTC. One, it's a lower cost because it's less hauling. It stays off of the main roadways for that hauling. It benefits Tom Wharf because in future expansion, it gets rid of material that would have to be removed as part of that expansion. So kind of overall win-win agreement for the Tom Wharf facility and for the road project. One other item that came up that we have in this agreement is a construction of a road that's up and out of the floodplain so that there could be in the future an ability to access the Tom Wharf site that would not be from Clean Water Way, which during a flood event does flood. And in the 1997 flood, we had to helicopter employees into the site to operate the plant. So those items are all contemplated in here. And it has been approved by the Regional Transportation Commission and has also been approved by the city of Sparks. And it's before you today for the final approval.
Maybe you can answer this, or if there's someone else that can. I know the Southeast Connector's been a project for a very long time, and it's a contentious issue. But for clarification, have new models been set up to show the widening of the current McCarran? Is there still such a need for the Southeast Connector? Is that information that you have with the current widening, and if there's still a demand for the Southeast?
I'll turn that question over to Garth Ochsul as far as the engineering studies have been performed in the traffic models that show the need for the Southeast Connector.
Thank you.
For the record, Garth Ochsul, project manager with the RTC. And yes, the traffic models do have the widening of McCarran that's currently planned to start construction in 2014, as well as the Southeast Connector. All previous plans, regional transportation plans, as well as master plans, have had both of those in there. One thing that I will point out for a point of clarification is McCarran only parallels the Southeast Connector for approximately a mile. So widening of McCarran does not meet the overall needs that the Southeast Connector meets. Again, they're only parallel for about a mile. McCarran, as you know, dips off to the west. Southeast Connector continues on down south to connect the communities and employment centers in the southern part of our valley.
And so if the current Phase 1 is created and we set up the bridge, and let's just draw just for worst-case scenarios, if Phase 2 is not completed, we'll possibly have a four-lane bridge to Pembroke? Is that the idea in the worst-case scenario?
That is one of the options that would be under a worst-case scenario, yes. In our current regional transportation plan, that's been adopted by all the entities. We also have a Mill Street extension in there. So there's a couple of opportunities to provide connectivity of the bridge over the river to the existing regional transportation network should Phase 2, like you said, worst-case scenario, become not able to be constructed.
And in the case where you guys don't receive permitting from the Army Corps of Engineer? Or is that pretty much the holdup for that phase? Is that correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
And the permit process is, as Mr. Flansburgh talked about, we have started the permitting process. We're actually, due to the concerns, as he illustrated, from the Pyramid Lake Paiute Tribe and other resource agencies, we are refining the design, the overall mitigation. And we're actually reducing our impacts to the waters of the US. So from a permitting standpoint, that's actually better. The fact that we've reduced our footprint and our impacts for Phase 2.
Any other? Ms. Shavey? Is your mic on? There it is.
When might this approval happen from the Corps of Engineers?
Our current schedule shows that come, I believe it is March, we will have our 30% refinement done for the stretch of the project, basically south of Miraloma, where we had the greatest impacts to Steamboat Creek that we're now eliminating or further reducing. At that time, we would repackage the permit submitted as an amendment. And we would start the review process, well, a review of the amendment process with them. We anticipate we could have a permit in hand in November of 2013.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion?
Just to add, I just, like many of the, just overall, just a concern of mine, just having a bridge built out, not having a full completion of a project, and kind of piecemealing has just been a concern, not only to me, but just the overall community. So it's just, as I'm sure, it'll start to create more relationship with the gentleman in a sense of where we're going with that. But that's kind of where I lie now. Don't really feel comfortable in the idea of spending $65 million on a bridge that will possibly end at Pembroke.
Any other discussion? Mr. Doritz, you want to give me a motion?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'll move to approve item E7.
Have a second? Have a second? Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Those that oppose, no?
No.
No.
Show the vote for 2 for approval. E17?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. I just, we got a... Is Marilyn here? Oh, there she is.
Don't be trying to hide, lady.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney.
And your concern on this is just identifying the funds to pay for this?
I brought it forward for your consideration so that you would understand that it involves, if you should choose to initiate it, that you need to identify the funds and also a public purpose for it, to distinguish it from other situations where applicants pay for their own development fees.
And I look at this a little different. I mean, this is brought in, I mean, if it's been brought in under our system that we used prior, it would have been brought in under and would have had zoning with it as it came in when it was annexed, correct?
I think there's a whole, I don't want to misspeak here, but I believe that there's a whole series of them that are in somewhat of a situation like this.
That's where I'm going next. I mean, we've got like a little over 700 of these properties out there that we need to have zoning attached to them. So from my standpoint, this is more of a planning issue that we should be doing within the city. And so I don't think it's, I don't think I have to identify the public purpose. I mean, as they come into the city, they should be zoned.
But that was a program that you had at that time, is that it would come in. There's no current program. This is a standalone situation.
I understand. And I think that's what I'm saying, is the funding for this should come from planning. Or actually, which is kind of funny because it's general fund, which would mean we pay the $11,000 and it goes right back into the general fund. So I think that's a little unique. But so from my standpoint, I think we need to do that for this one. But I also think we have to address these other 700 properties that are out there. And I'd like to see if we can get this planning staff to bring back a plan, possibly in January, that addresses how we're going to address these other 700-plus properties that are out there that have been annexed and have no zoning attached to them.
Claudia Hansen, Planning and Engineering Manager. We can do that in January.
Okay.
Hi. You know, this new concept or legal interpretation that we don't have the authority to initiate until we make good on the budget is really a new interpretation of past practices. And I don't know why, you know, all of a sudden it's coming up or what has changed. I mean, the city council's initiated zoning changes for years and had the authority. And it's never been interpreted as a gift. It is, like you say, part of our core responsibilities. And frankly, I don't understand how we've been annexing without putting zoning on either.
We've got to come up to the solution to that.
I mean, so I couldn't be in more agreement with you.
Okay, so that's my motion, Mr. Mayor, is to approve this. And I guess if we have to shift funds from the general fund to pay for this and back into the general fund, we can do it that way.
Second?
Aye.
At this time, we're going back to item C1, Rick Bailey. Rick, I apologize for not being down here.
That's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Usually, they come down right away, so usually I bring them. What does he think? He's getting off?
No.
Come on.
No, he will never quit. You know, I think the delaying, having the proclamation here, was kind of that influence for you to stick around a little longer. Yeah. Whereas LD Lovett has served the citizens of Reno for over 41 years in many civic organizations directed towards the growth and diversity of the community. And whereas LD co-founded the Alliance of Racial Minorities to welcome new educators to the Truckee Meadows Community College and the University of Nevada-Reno. And whereas LD was an active member of the city of Reno Diversity Action Committee since its inception in 2000. And whereas LD founded the Community-Wide Cultural Diversity Awareness Committee to promote greater understanding and appreciation of affirmative action, equal opportunity, diversity, and inclusion while serving as the Director of Office of Diversity at Truckee Meadows Community College. And whereas LD has been a significant influence in the professional lives of many educators, leaders, students, and others in our community, and was a quiet yet consistent voice that led to the changing of attitudes, perceptions, and stereotypes towards affirmative action and equal opportunity, diversity, and inclusion in Truckee Meadows. And whereas LD has served on the Reno Civil Service Commission since August of 1997 with consecutive terms as Chair of the Reno Civil Service Commission since July of 2001. And whereas the city of Reno acknowledges and appreciates LD Lovett's faithful and enthusiastic service for the city of Reno and its residents, we thereby do hereby officially proclaim, hard to get that one out, Wednesday, December 12th, as LD Lovett Day in and for the city of Reno, and encourage all citizens to recognize and appreciate LD for his dedication and service to our community.
I wasn't prepared to give a speech, and Rick told me to come up, and I was just supposed to accept this. But, Mr. Mayor and the council, I'd like to say it's been an honor to serve, and I didn't realize it had been 13 to 14 years. I'd like to thank my wife and daughter for their support because in order to serve this long, you have to have the support from home. And so that's been good. I'd also like to recognize Rick and his staff, Rick Bailey. And I think, and I don't remember all of the staff in civil service, but Rick and Joanne is here now. I know Mary was there when I first came. And Jewel. And they have been... there when I first came, and Jewel, and they have been very, very supportive. Also, the members of the current commission that I serve with now, Jeannie Bertha, and Jeannie again. As I leave, I feel that the civil service, well, the group is in good hands. They have excellent professional leaders. And, again, I wasn't quite prepared for all this. And as I listen to some of the things that I've done, I guess I better frame this and put it up someplace, because after over 30 years, you forget some of the stuff that you were, you were involved in. So, without embarrassing myself anymore, I'd like to thank you guys for everything. And it's been an honor to serve the city and the people of the state of Nevada. Thanks.
LD, thank you. LD, we appreciate your leadership and your being involved in our community very much. You've done an outstanding job, you've been a great leader in the community, and we really appreciate you, and thank you very much, sir. Now, we'll go to public hearings. Item F1. I have several people wishing to speak on F1. I will, Mike Raely, excuse me, Madam Secretary, have all the notices been sent?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, proper notice was given and no correspondence was received.
Okay. Mike Raely?
Good afternoon. My name is Mike Raely. I'm with Rubicon Design Group here on behalf of the project applicant, the Manki Family Trust. I'm just going to give, I know you have a very full agenda today. I was going to give a presentation, I'm not sure if you'd like to hear the staff report first or hear our presentation first.
It would be...
We're going to have staff's presentation, and then you can comment.
Thank you.
Yes, go ahead. Staff?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Planning Commission approved this item at their November Planning Commission meeting with a vote of six to one. At that meeting, there were three speakers in opposition of the project. So, dealing with a 14-acre site, planned unit development to develop in two phases, which Phase One would develop with a storage facility for mobile homes and RVs. Phase Two would be a commercial development along the McCarran perimeter.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This project was approved unanimously by the city council earlier this year for a master plan amendment to special planning area. Development was proposed on this site two times previously in the future, which was ultimately denied, and that was done under conventional zoning. And I think, given some of the natural constraints of the site, that conventional zoning was not appropriate mechanism for development of the site. So, we've really taken a new approach with this PUD. As part of this, we've been to the NAB three times. We actually went to the NAB prior to submitting our PUD with a variety of plans to get comments, and then kind of backed into the development plan that's included in your report. We have met individually with neighbors or attempted to meet with all of our neighbors. We've met with representatives from the East Side Homeowners Association. We've met with Ms. Rodemeyer regarding flood concerns. We've met with representatives from UNR. We've met with council members, many previous council members, I should point out. And we've also taken the comments that were made during the Planning Commission hearing as part of the master plan amendment very seriously in how we designed the project. Really, and if I can get the overhead. This is the current Phase One plan, and as you will see, the buildings in orange are essentially RV garages. They're a metal building, a garage that you can pull a boat or an RV into, while these are covered carport-type structures. And if you notice the way the site is laid out, there's a definite reason for that. That's the existing flood zone map. As you can see, the area in green is Zone AE, which is the critical flood zone, and the area in blue is outside of that flood plain area. So, we've essentially put all of our buildings are in, really, the most intensely developed portions of the site outside of that flood zone. The second phase, should it ever be built, you'll see that it's very limited in the handbook in terms of what can be allowed. It's capped on square footage, and all that commercial area is right along McCarran outside of the flood zone. Really, what I think is more important is it shows that the amount of buffering and flood storage area that we have created, essentially, we've included a standard in our handbook that states that we not only have to meet City of Reno code, but we have to show a positive impact in terms of flood mitigation to all adjoining properties. The area where the RVs will be stored, boats and RVs, we have a provision that they must be operable vehicles, not inoperable vehicles. The staff will have keys to all the vehicles, so should, for example, you know, a couple weeks ago, we had a flood, potential flood. We knew on Wednesday that there was a flood warning that, for Sunday, so that would give the staff and owners of the vehicles plenty of time to move things out. The operator of this facility has three other storage facilities in town that he could put things at on a temporary basis, and if the owners do not come and collect their RVs, the operators can do that for them. In terms of buffering, our southern landscape buffer is approximately four times what would be required by standard city code, and there's a 290-foot separation from the closest building on our property to the closest residence, which is the Wogki residence to the south. And I think it's important, when you look at the flood concerns, that in an absence of a flood project or a plan, that the only way really you will get flood improvements is with the approval of projects such as this. And really, what this boils down to is that there will be an additional 35,000 cubic feet or 1,300 cubic yards of additional flood storage created with this project over what exists today. It does meet all the policies and standards included in the Reno City Code. And just to kind of give you some summary of the history on this project, the property, the project was reviewed by the Truckee Meadows Flood Project and was found to be in compliance with all their policies and flood models. As, and really, the flooding and our project engineer, Matt Rasmussen with Technics Design Group is here today as well. It's really a backwater effect that occurs on this property, so it's not, and I'll wrap up. With that, I know you have a very full agenda. I can answer any questions that you might have that come up.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Kim Rodemeyer?
This is the property we're talking about right here. You guys should have a copy of my comments, because I don't know if I'll be able to finish them. "Good afternoon, Kim Rodemeyer, and I'm here to oppose the request for a zoning map amendment. First, let me say that after going to the Planning Commission meetings where this was heard, I have to say recommendations from that body should be discounted, as most there have no concept of floodplain development for the safety of surrounding communities or commercial developments. Imagine my dismay when one commissioner admitted that he did not have his packet and had not read it, another stating, and I quote, 'People should be allowed to do what they want with their property,' end quote, which totally discounts the findings that protects surrounding residents. And last, but certainly not least, one commissioner asking staff if this property is where the water comes from. Staff also seemed unknowledgeable and either gave partial answers or skipped answers altogether when asked direct questions about how much this land floods. Reno is famous for their attempts to cover every square inch of the floodplain with development. The east side is now the last bastion of protection that southeast Reno has for flood storage, limited as it is when the next flood comes. Chipping away at this now would lead to the eventual destruction of communities and commercial properties surrounding the entire storage basin. The applicant's geotechnical engineering report states repeatedly that the first 12 inches of deposits in the entire area are floodplain deposits from the truckee and steamboat from many historic floods. It also says that limitations associated with the use of this soil for urban development as described by the soil survey are potential for flooding, seasonal high water table, moderately slow permeability, and severe frost susceptibility. In addition, it stated in their report that when the exploration took place in April, free water was recorded across the entire stite at stabilized depths as shallow as four feet in a drought year. This brings up serious questions about their flood storage area being rendered useless as it most likely will have excessive standing water in it year-round, just like the Buckbean flood storage basin. They will never be able to increase their flood retention if needed, as they can't dig deeper than three feet, and what are their mitigation plans should this become a lake? There are many other factors. Security fencing and extensive landscaping and with shrubs in a flood storage area is insane idea at best, putting surrounding residents at risk. Any amount of fill for pads would be dangerous to surrounding residents. There should be no fill at all if development is allowed. Buildings should be at current elevation. Bringing RVs, boats, and cars to store in a designated flood storage area puts the surrounding residents at risk for hazardous materials in addition to the Truckee River and our drinking water supply, not to mention downstream communities, ecosystems, and sacred sites, due to the fact that the flooding of these RVs, boats, and cars will not be like flooding that the rest of the Truckee Meadows has, with inundation followed by rapid drainage. Historically, water has sat in the storage basin for days. The applicant's evacuation plan for the vehicles would be hilarious if this wasn't so serious. The applicant handbook also says that the PUD would allow for future commercial development along McCarran with its associated pads from fill and impervious parking areas. It also allows for development of the storage basin sometime in the future, should technology allow, that that area no longer be in Critical Flood Zone 1. Allowing future plans like this to not to have to come back before council would be negligent at best. Thank you.
Thank you. Chris Olberg?
Chris Olberg, lifelong resident of City of Reno. The question I have is, I'm a little bit, and I'm a developer, but I find it weird that way back when all this, I wish I had her picture, when all this was approved, these people said, "We're going to give you 10 acres for open space." Now, I find out it's in the floodplain. Now, they want to come back later and build it, but the reason they got the permit in the first place is they guaranteed us a piece of open space. That's what I created in my backyard for the animals was open space, and especially now we find out it's in the floodplain. If they're going to build this thing, this 10 acres that they gave us way back when, which only knows what year it was, they can't rescind on that deal. That's going to stay open space. The animals have to have somewhere to live, too. We can't just keep covering this thing up with blight mini storage units. It's got to stay. We've got to have the open space in this city.
Thank you very much. Ed Hawkins?
For the record, Ed Hawkins, Ward 4 NAB Chair. This gentleman just stole my thunder. I guess I shouldn't speak to people in the foyer before we come to meet. We've got Etcheverria Properties out there in Silver Lake that has a playa that's going to dedicate 219 acres of open space to the Nevada Land Conservatory out there. They've already completed a little walkway out there with some parking areas. When they say open space, such as this 10.4 acres, it means open space. It doesn't mean we'll go ahead and say, "We're going to convert it later on into commercial, commercial arterial." What happens if Mr. Etcheverria decides when he builds a 65-acre warehouse out there on the playa, that he wants to take half of the 219 acres of open space? I've got a problem. I've been fighting him anyway. But if it's dedicated open space, it remains open space. We don't revert back to another zoning that it once might have had. There's a reason why it was open space. I'd like to see all the developments where I'm at out in the valley stay at open space, which they've designated on their plans. This is my gripe. If it's open space, it stays open space. It's for you and me to enjoy or not to enjoy. It's not for us to change the zoning on to allow development on that property. Thanks.
Thank you. Jim Watke?
My name is, excuse me, my name is Jim Watke, and I own the property right next to the property there. The only thing that separates this is a fence, and it's obvious, Kim showed there that this is a floodplain out there. And what my concern is right now is that if this is approved, does this mean that the property that the City of Reno has spent millions of dollars on buying down by the river, which is in the same floodplain, it's the same water, same ground, same everything, does this mean that I can go down there now and build a storage unit down there? They spent millions and millions of dollars to buy that land because it's in the floodplain, and it's obvious this here in the same floodplain. So, if they're allowed to do this, does this mean that this opens up the rest? The university here, well, it was a while back, was going to try to sell the property and develop it. Well, the city, the people opposed on that, and they pulled their planning to build out there out of the deal. Well, I think Mike even said that that kind of hurt them, because they figured that if that development went there, that 100 acres or something was going to go right along McCarran, that then that way there, they could not, probably them, of building the storage units here. But then, when the university pulled out on that, well, then that kind of slowed them down a little bit, because they figured they had it made, because they could walk right in there and say, "Well, you let them do it, so you have to let me do it." So, is it the same thing like right now? If you let them develop this, does this mean that the other people down there, other people can go in and say even lease that land from the City of Reno and develop the storage units in there, because they say, "Well, I got a key to the thing, you can drive them out?" And they said, "Here, well, everybody's going to have a key for this thing." I've had motorhomes, I've had trailers, I've stepped over my life, and I'll guarantee you one thing, that the batteries go dead on those, or tires go flat on those vehicles." And he said, "Well, we have the keys, we'll go move them all out." Look, the invasion of Normans and stuff like that were organized by people that went wrong. And now, I'm going to go there as a plain citizen, and I'm going to organize 300 motorhomes to be moved out of there, well, that means I've got to get hold of 300 people with 300 keys with 300 dead batteries and flat tires, and then a person comes in and says, "Well, I can't do anything about that, that's not my fault. They get flooded? I'm sorry, that's not my fault. I'm not responsible for none of that stuff." So, it's a no-lose situation. If this is approved, it's a no-lose situation for them, because they don't have to, no insurance, no nothing, nothing carried nothing. You say, "Well, I didn't force you to park that car there." It's like a salesman, car salesman. Hey, once I've sold you this, I'm done and finished with it. And it's like Mike. He's a salesman, that's what he does professionally, that's what his job is, and he's up here to sell this to you, and if it all goes wrong, and the tires are all flat, and the batteries are all dead, and they can't move a vehicle out of there, all they're going to do is stand there and say, "Boy, I'm sure sorry about that, but on the paper, it sure looked good." And I don't know. It's just going to open up a can of worms for everybody. I know it's going to sure open up for me, because I lived there and I hope to die there, and I sure don't want this in a flood like it shows right there any more than what it is right now. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Karen Woodkey? She does not wish to speak, she's in opposition. She submitted her talking points in writing. Correct? Okay.
I can't believe I'm talking.
Okay. Derek Wilson?
Good afternoon. Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group, representing the owner. I just wanted to clarify, the open space issue was just brought up. This particular property has never been public open space, so we're not eliminating open space, we're not retracting any earlier agreement about open space. This was formerly a commercial driving range, so it has never functioned as public open space.
Okay. Thank you very much. Having no other public comment cards, I'll bring it back to the table for discussion.
Yes. Mayor, I think one of the issues that we have here that's going to continue to come about is the further idea or planning of what we want to do with the floodplain? I think this is a perfect opportunity, hopefully, we can, in terms of how we can work with staff or anyone else about what's the overall vision with the floodplain in terms of development, whether it's open space or not.
Somebody please turn your cell phone off, please.
The different, the way we're going about it now, doing piecemeal about it, I don't think is doing justice to anybody out there in terms of our vision. So, I hope that we can get staff and council and other electors or other community folks to get ideas to what we're doing out there, because if not, it's going to continue to come back to us, if not weekly, monthly, about one parcel or another, and what the impact is going to be overall in that region.
Ms. Shavey?
I used to live right there, literally, right there. And I lived through that last disastrous flood that we had. It was pretty horrific. So, I'm pretty concerned about... So I'm pretty concerned about, you know, the potential of, this could be pretty devastating. So I definitely think we need to do much more research and really look at this. I'm very concerned about it.
Mayor, I have a series of questions about the specifics of the request before us. First of all, Mr. Rayly, when you showed up that map of the floodplain areas, did that map also correspond to the distinctions of where the existing zoning is drawn?
No.
Do you have a copy of the zoning map?
I believe I do.
And while you're looking for that, I'll ask you a question about something that you wrote in the materials about this, and you called it "old Washoe County zoning." And, you know, I understand that that's "old Washoe County zoning" is a term that references zoning that Washoe County had, or actually land uses, because they were a one-map system at the time. Related to when they would go out, and this is maybe getting to Councilmember Delgado's comments, where they would go out and plan the county themselves, large swaths of areas, they called them "area plans," and then they would put the land use on, and then we would annex, which we've done on this, and more or less keep their annexation in some form. And I'm just, I'm curious, because I know this property has two, you know, the description says there's two zoning districts. One is open space and the other is UT 40, right?
Correct.
And I don't know, you know, if you can't find it, you can just draw where you think it is.
I can't. And what I can tell you, I do have a little bit of the zoning history.
Yeah.
I researched this. It was actually zoned general rural.
Okay.
In Washoe County, there was a commercial driving range that operated under a special use permit that was issued by Washoe County.
Okay.
When this was annexed in, it was, the driving range use was zoned open space because a commercial recreational facility is a permitted use in open space. So the open space zoning is reflective of the driving range, essentially, from what I'm told through records. And unfortunately, I don't have the zoning map, and I do believe the open space designation is just, is kind of a blob, and I apologize for, I have the handbook, but I don't actually have our application package. But that's where the zoning came into place. I understand, there you go.
Oh, he's got it. Okay, it wasn't in the materials. Okay. So the UT 40, okay, I understand that. And what was the, when did this annex?
I believe it annexed in 2004, 2005.
2004, okay. And so, you know, the parcel, the legal description in here reflects that there was a land division of this parcel created in 2006. Can you tell me what, from which parcel this was created in 2006?
Building, that was, actually, that was done prior to the acquisition by Mr. Manke.
When did he acquire the property?
About seven years, so 2005. So it must have been done right, it probably was done right before he purchased the property.
Okay. What is interesting is that we have a UT 40 zone property, which, yeah, it goes linear, you know, west to east along the north end of the property, UT 40, which is not reflective of what UT 40 standards are, you know, it's 40 acres. So we have a non-conforming created parcel, we have open space reflecting a formal use. So I'm starting to understand, what was the Washoe County area plan vision for this area? And this gets to Councilman Delgado's questions.
The area plan, and I know this for a fact because I reviewed the area plan, showed everything on the east side of McCarran as general rural, which is one unit per 40 acre. So technically, this parcel didn't even conform when it was in the county either.
Okay. So in 2004, when we annexed this areas, and I think we're in the process, or it has been annexed the property to the north, right?
Right.
That's University Farms, that's UNR tonight, is, we've basically been taking on a lot of general rural land that the counties had with not our own vision or translation in place. And so bit by bit, folks like you and University Farms are coming forward. We have two unknown infrastructure projects in this region, the flood project and the road, which are big, you know, big things. And so I see that, I see that Mr. Manke has a property and he's ready to develop it, and, you know, there's a lot of unknowns how we have dealt with this property and providing infrastructure. So I see that. And you've gone before twice to zone the property under straight zoning. What were those, what was the concept in those zonings?
The first time, the, it was, the master plan was proposed as urban residential commercial and arterial commercial zoning.
Okay.
Which would, as you know, arterial commercial is the most intense, other than HC is the most intense, commercial zoning in the city, which would allow for basically, you know, even a Walmart, in theory, you could put on there. The second request was to do mixed residential zoning and neighborhood, or mixed residential master plan and neighborhood commercial zoning. And if you go back and review the minutes, that's why, the reason that was given for the ultimate denial is that it was too open-ended, is what could be put there, and there was concerns that whatever needed to be, whatever was developed there, in fact, if you read the minutes, there was statements by the council that said, "We feel that this project could be developed, however, we have no guarantee that you will not sell this property and something else will be built there." That's why we chose the PUD approach, because it's very specific in terms of what can be developed. It has standards that require the flood mitigation, standards that say you can't put large-scale commercial uses, that sort of thing. So the idea behind the PUD is that it would give those assurances as to what could be developed there in the future.
And I can understand that. When you're jumping from GR to something in the city, you know, on McCarran, one of our busiest streets, you know, I can understand you're making a jump, and you're essentially in your PUD doing your planning that we have neglected to do as the city through our annexation programs over the years and subsequent planning. However, when I read the Nevada revised statutes about, which I understand the code now basically uses Nevada revised statutes as the zoning ordinance for, I see a preamble about the purpose of the PUD, and that is that it is planned, and this is the definition, define, "PUD means an area of land controlled by a landowner which is to be developed as a single entity for a number of dwelling units, the plan for which does not correspond in lot size, bulk, or type, density, lot coverage, and required open space to the regulations established in any one district." I mean, it's actually, it's an odd permutation that we don't have a residential property before us, but the concept of the PUD is really that it's integrated, single development. I don't see in your phasing plan, and you made the statement that if Phase 2 ever develops, that we're really looking at this as a project ready to go, meriting the plan unit development designation. And I'm particularly concerned about that because Phase 2 seems so open-ended and unknown. And that's one concern of the PUD, of the uses. I have other concerns about the infrastructure, but on the uses side, you know, what is the timing for Phase 2? And it looks like, because what you've attached is anything can go on Phase 2.
Let me, there's a couple of points to make in there. And actually, if you read the Reno City Code definition, this is one reason to use a PUD is to address unique natural features and constraints and that sort of thing. And I, so I, and I think really a PUD is ideal for this property because you can address the unique natural constraints of the site. It allows you to create standards to address them. In terms of mixed flexibility in uses, Phase 2 is largely dependent, number one, on the economy and market conditions. Right now, I don't think any additional commercial is warranted right along McCarran. However, in speaking with some of the neighbors that we met with, they said, you know, they'd love to see a Starbucks or something like that in there in the future. You know, that's going to be market-driven. Additionally, depending on what happens in the area, as you mentioned, upgrades in infrastructure. Right now, it would take, you would need a very specific commercial user in there in order to justify the expenses to extend sewer to serve that particular use. I think in the future, you know, what happens with the UNR farm to the north is very much up in the air. There are some other development plans that are being discussed in the general area that haven't been brought forward that could completely change that, that might change the dynamic of what goes there. But for right now, our, the applicant is in the storage business, he operates several facilities in the City of Reno, and that is what he plans to construct.
Okay. Well, I understand that explanation. Now, in terms of, you brought up the sewer system. I know for Phase 1, the plan is to install a septic system. And, you know, there are septic systems in the City of Reno, but I have not any knowledge of bringing in a commercial development, particularly a PUD, which is, you know, infrastructure-in-place sort of development, where we use a septic tank. I'm very concerned about that, particularly in a flood environment like this. And, you know, if the infrastructure's not there, the infrastructure's not there. And sometimes it takes, you know, a more concerted effort of development or focus of development to make the economic justification of extending that sewer system.
And if I can, if I can address that. The existing golf driving range that was there operated on a septic system, it had two commercial restrooms and, as well as like, you know, break room type thing for thing. The only thing that is included with it, and we have a standard in our handbook that says everything must be dry-lined with Phase 1. So we'll have to put in the sewer lines. Phase 2, it says absolutely must connect to sewer, it's not an option. And for Phase 1, there's essentially four fixtures. There's the office, which will have a toilet, there's a studio apartment above which will have a toilet and a sink and a shower. So you have four fixtures. So there's really nothing to generate much sewage to begin with. And the way that, and our engineer can expand on this, the sewer leach, or the septic leach field would be up in that area that's outside of the flood zone. So for really, for, to justify extending sewer for four fixtures, it seems that this is really, you know, essentially not that big of a deal.
Well, I see it a little differently. I mean, I can understand for a driving range when you're general rural in the county, but this is the City of Reno. And I learned, you know, on my campaign trail about septic in the city when we go in there and West Plum Lane is area. So I'm very concerned about bringing in an old-timey, not urban-standard infrastructure into a development, and that is a concern for me on this. You mentioned that he does own other facilities in storage, outdoor storage. What, oh, by the way, what is the use classification for an RV storage? Is it, is it outdoor storage?
Outdoor. I believe it falls in between outdoor storage and personal storage.
Okay. So basically, an industrial, use allowed in the industrial zones, pretty much? Outdoor storage is allowed?
Outdoor, but this would, through our standards, is much more highly regulated in terms of not allowing large-scale equipment and that sort of thing.
I understand, but we would, if we were putting this use into a straight zoning, we'd be talking about an industrial-type zoning here.
You know, I don't, I'd have to defer that back to staff. I think it falls under personally, because Mr. Manke has other facilities in this general area, one in Sparks right next to Marina and one by the university that offer the same sort of things that clearly are not industrial.
Maybe Nathan could answer that.
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, Mini-Storage. Outdoor storage would be allowed also in commercial districts with approval of a special use permit.
Special use permit, okay. But out of riding industrial, okay, I'm getting that. Okay. Mr. Manke owns other facilities in Reno? I'm wondering, and I know the history of some of those, which involved a protracted encroachment onto city property that, you know, was really at issue for the city. The city had to spend a lot of time with him when he was encroaching onto, I think, a public right-of-way, very tangled, involved situation. And that's why I'm a little concerned when we have this higher level of regulation on him, we don't have any enforcement procedures or any stopgap measures to ensure that the parking would extend on to Phase 2.
I guess I would disagree with that, that the handbook is very clear, and there could be code enforcement action if the standards in the handbook were not followed.
Yeah.
I'm not familiar with what you're referring to. I know there was an issue regarding a fence along the Boynton Slough that was done, because a survey was done, you know, back in the 60s or whatever, and there was a discrepancy in property lines, but I know that was rectified. But in terms of, I mean, we will be held to this plan, it is enforceable, and his business license could be revoked ultimately if he does not follow the plan.
Well, is there a fence up between Phase 1 and Phase 2 to ensure that there will not be encroachment of, you know, his business is going well for him?
Well, within Phase 1, Phase 1 actually gets removed to accommodate Phase 2.
Phase 1 gets removed to accommodate Phase 2?
These metal garage buildings would actually be removed in order to accommodate Phase 2. And I can put a plan of Phase 2 up that you can see.
Okay. Well, you know, I think this is...
Yeah. So as you can see, the buildings, right, these buildings that are in Phase 1 would remain, but those, all the enclosed garages that would be constructed with the storage unit would have to be torn out to accommodate Phase 2. And they're, you know, they're metal garage structure, so removing those is really not that difficult.
And I bring this up also because one of the findings is the, you know, protection of the natural environment, the drainage ways, and I think in that other encroachment issue, there were drainage way encroachment issues, you know, of leakage and fluids going into the slough, and I just want to make sure that we'd have that protection, you know, with this same use against the same slough.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, the facility on Longley, obviously, was developed prior to the current codes being in place and whatnot, but I think if you look at the facility on Longley, it's very well-maintained, it's very well-kept, and they've had no code enforcement issues that I'm aware of.
Okay. And I would agree. I mean, I think it's a good one, I think he, his business was so good, you know, maybe that's why, maybe it was a survey, I don't know. I guess, you know, my line of questioning is leading me to being unable to make the findings, and I know there's multiple findings we have to make for the PUD and for the zone change in many ways, and I'm prepared to get in, you know, put it back to the table and elaborate my findings of not able to support this development. But I'll put it back to the table for others for comment at this point.
Any other comments right now? Mr. Dort?
Just real quick, I just got a couple of questions. And really, mine's going to focus around the flood storage, because you, one of the comments you made was that you actually have additional flood storage in this compared to what we have today?
That's correct. Over what exists today, based on our plan, we have approximately 35,000 cubic feet, or a little over 1,300 cubic yards of additional flood storage within that detention area along the south and east sides of the property.
And how are you accomplishing that?
I could refer that to our engineer, but essentially, we're, I can go back to that plan that I had up, I'm going to steal it back from Nathan. By creating this large detention area, that's where all that additional flood storage comes in.
Okay. Then just for our staff, question for our staff, and that's, so I look at this, and I mean, are we doing more than a one-to-one on this?
Bill Gahl, senior engineer for the record. Yeah, they're doing, they take out, you know, one-to-one, so it's slightly about, you know, we calculated, they have 74,000 cubic yards available prior to development and a little over 75,000. It's about a 2% beyond the one-to-one mitigation for this.
Okay. So no, it would have no detrimental impacts to any of the properties surrounding it?
I don't see where that would have a detrimental flooding impact, any properties around it. There would be additional storage if it was constructed as designed.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Obviously, I'd like to hear comments from other council members and where we're at. I mean, I'm, you know, it's Oscar, it's your ward, so...
Yeah. Again, I think it's, as Jenny laid out, and other concerns have been laid out before us, I think we ultimately want to take a step back and look at what we're trying to do with the floodplain. What are we doing out there? Mr. Manke, knowing that he was purchasing property in the floodplain area, if there's going to be anything else put out before us, we need to make sure we're all on the same page. I don't feel comfortable doing this piecemeal, so if there's an opportunity for us to review this, this item, and then to work with staff and others about what we're trying to do with the region out there, I think we need to take that opportunity.
I'd like to comment. I tend to agree as well that having an opportunity to review this in a little more detail is desired, but I also want it to be time-sensitive with the patience of the developer in mind. So if we do continue this item, I'd like it to be re, brought back to us in a relatively short amount of time.
Probably the, since this is, I think, this is the last meeting, be the end of January that it would be brought back to us.
Well, if I can add, I think this is in direct relation with our other issue with UNR farms. And so I think, you know, we don't want to put the wagon before the horse about anything else. We don't want to make sure that we're not brushing things in order to, you know, for one purpose, and then realizing that something else is related to that. So in terms of, you know, getting it done sooner than later, but at the end of the day, I wanted to make sure that we're doing it right. So I don't know about...
I agree with that. I'm just saying, let's be sensitive to the...
Did you want to make a motion for continuance?
Do we need, do we need to have the applicant's permission to, because I know I don't know what the timeline is that we're under right now with them, but if they're okay with a continuance until January?
We would be agreeable to a continuance to January.
It would be the last meeting in January.
The second meeting in January?
Definitely.
Second meeting in January.
Is that okay, Oscar?
Huh?
That's fine.
Is that okay?
That's okay.
That's okay.
Okay. You want to make, so that's a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. All right. There are no ordinances. We will go to resolutions. Item H1.
Resolution number 7798. Resolution granting community pride grant funds to the active 2030 Club of Reno to purchase clothing and other necessities for underprivileged and at-risk use attending selected Title I elementary schools. Funding is from the following neighborhood advisory boards. Ward one in the amount of $1,500. Ward two, Central, in the amount of $1,500. Ward three in the amount of $1,800. Ward four, North Valleys, in the amount of $3,000. And Ward five, Northwest, in the amount of $1,500 for a total amount of $9,300. Resolution number 7799. Resolution granting community pride grant funds to Very Special Arts Nevada to offset costs associated with hands-on special education art workshops in the amount of $12,000.
Have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H3.
Resolution number 7800. Resolution granting community pride grant funds from the Ward five Northwest Neighborhood Advisory Board to Bruka Theater for the purchase of an airtight storage container for theater equipment and costumes in the amount of $2,000.
Move to adopt.
Have a motion. Second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item H4.
Resolution number 7801. Resolution in support of the consolidated tax bill draft generated by the interim subcommittee to study the allocation of money distributed from the local government tax distribution account.
Chair, have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Now we'll go to item H1, or I1, excuse me, I1.
I1 is bill number 68...
Wait one minute. I have somebody wishes to speak. Nicole Willis-Grimes?
Good afternoon. Nicole Willis-Grimes with the Friar Group on behalf of the Nevada Resort Association. I just wanted to let the council know that we very much appreciate working with staff. They're taking time to address some of the concerns we had on some of the initial drafts of the language and to let you know that we're comfortable with the language as is.
Okay. No other public comment. Bring it back to the staff. Give us...
Yes. Now, now you have bill number 6839, and this is an ordinance to men title five of the Reno Municipal Code entitled Privilege Licenses, Permits, and Franchises, Chapter 5.07, entitled Alcoholic Beverages by Adding Section 5.07.200 disciplinary action procedures and penalties together with other matters property relating thereto. And since this is a first reading...
Do I have a motion? Have a second.
Second.
Have a second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Community D, J1.
For the record, Jodroya Gooden, Housing and Neighborhood Development Administrator. Per the staff report, staff is requesting some assistance from the council members in terms of ensuring we maintain compliance with federal regulations related to grant-funded projects. And those actions include your direction to initiate amendments to the annual action plan to reallocate available CDBG funds. Second one is to initiate an amendment to the Neighborhood Stabilization Program Action Plan, which would add an additional target area. The map was included in your staff report, but I can show it to you as well if you'd like. And to add eligible activities. And the final action is to initiate a zone change for the city-owned properties at the corner of Oliver and Montello, which the city purchased with CDBG program with the intention of rezoning to a single family. That just never happened. So we're initiating the zone change from neighborhood commercial to single-family, six density, six units per acre maximum. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay. Any questions? Okay.
Second.
Have a motion. Second. All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item J21.
Mayor, I have a disclosure on this matter, if I might.
Sure.
Okay. I'm providing the following disclosure. From approximately April 2011 through September 2011, I was employed as an independent consultant by Scenic Nevada, one of the litigants to the lawsuits, to the lawsuits mentioned in the staff report for item J2. For this work, I was compensated approximately $4,000 and performed the work on a less than part-time basis. The scope of the work I provided to Scenic Nevada was primarily related to organizational development, special events, and to a lesser extent, providing policy advice. During this period, I represented Scenic Nevada in preparing and commenting upon publicly an earlier iteration of the ordinance that was ultimately adopted and is now subject of the lawsuit. Item GA3 is a proposed resolution to clarify the intent of the ordinance that was adopted and is the subject of the lawsuit. I was not involved in any way in my capacity as a consultant nor as a private individual in the creation or adoption of the ordinance that was ultimately adopted and is now the subject of this lawsuit. I have not been employed as a consultant for Scenic Nevada since September 2011, and I have not had any form of business relationship with Scenic Nevada since that time. I do not anticipate having any form of business relationship with Scenic Nevada in the future. I understand that Scenic Nevada is represented by the Law Office of Mark Ray and that an employee of that firm is a member of the Scenic Nevada Board of Directors. My relationship to that firm and individuals who work for that firm is limited to the support that firm provided to my election campaign that is of or will be reported through the reporting requirements for campaigns subject to the Nevada election laws. NRS 281A.420 Sub 3 requires a public officer to abstain from voting on a matter with, quote, "with respect to the independence of a judgment of a reasonable person in the public officer's situation would be material affected by (a) the public officer's acceptance of a gift or loan; (b) the public officer pecuniary interest; or (c) the public officer's commitment in a private capacity to the interests of others." In my case, I have not accepted a gift or loan from Scenic Nevada. I have no current pecuniary interest whatsoever with Scenic Nevada and have had no business relationship with this entity for over one year. Three, I do not have any current commitment in a private capacity to the interests of Scenic Nevada. And four, Nevada election law excludes campaign support from the definition of a gift or loan for purposes of a public officer's exclusion from participating in the voting duties of office. I am disclosing my prior relationship with Scenic Nevada, so the public is informed of these facts. I do not feel that my prior business relationship with Scenic Nevada will affect or impact either my personal judgment or the independent judgment of a reasonable person in my situation. Accordingly, I'm going to fulfill the duties of the office to which I am elected under the public policy of this state, and I'm going to be voting on this matter and the subsequent one, which is the reference J3. And for the record, a copy of this disclosure will be maintained on file in the city clerk's office.
Okay.
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. I'm back. We are asking with respect to J1, or excuse me, J.2, two actions. Number one, to initiate a moratorium ordinance. And number two, to adopt a moratorium resolution. The reason that we are requesting this is that, as you know, on October 24th, 2012, you adopted the digital billboard ordinance and that you made its effective date January 24th. One of the reasons to do that was to give various people opportunity to bring any lawsuits that they desired to bring. And perhaps those lawsuits could have been resolved by January 24th, 2013. There has been a motion filed for injunctive relief against the city in one of those lawsuits. And the other lawsuit, because of the time that it was filed, will not be answered for some period of time. And therefore, it is unlikely that either of these lawsuits will be resolved by January 24th, 2013. In order to protect the city from any developer submitting an application, having it approved, and a building permit issued for a digital billboard, and then having the law deemed to be unconstitutional, and the city then having been in the uncomfortable position of perhaps having to either remove a billboard or to pay any damages that may be sustained by the billboard operator, we request that you take those two actions.
Okay.
Any additional questions? I'll be happy to answer.
All right. Any comments or anything? Mr. Dort? How you like that, Mr. Dort?
Yeah, you know how I feel about moratoriums, Mr. Mayor.
I know that. That's why I thought you'd make a great guy to make a motion.
But I guess in this case, it does make sense. It's, the timing on it, I think, is fine. So I'll go ahead and move to initiate the moratorium, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second? I have a second. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J22.
Resolution number 7802. Resolution temporary halting the acceptance of digital billboard applications to alter any off-premise advertising display, whether existing or banked, to create a digital off-premises advertising display as allowed by ordinance number 6258.
Move to adopt.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J3. Resolution ratifying interpretation of deleting off-premise message signs, messages from on-premise signs. Ms. Craig?
Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. This is not a moratorium action. So what happened in this case, when we were considering this bill, digital billboard ordinance, legal requested that you remove, one, the opportunity to display off-premises advertising on on-premise signs. That raised considerable legal questions, and we asked you to do that. I, and I take full responsibility for this, lined out one of the phrases in one of the ordinances. It was contained the identical phrase in an additional ordinance, which I didn't catch. What I'm asking you to do today is to ratify staff's interpretation that when you lined out the one or eliminated that language from the one section that you also intended to eliminate from the other, so that there's clear intent that you intended to eliminate the opportunity to place off-premise advertising on on-premise signs.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, Tracy Chaser, Reno City Attorney's Office. On item J31, the number, for the record, for the administrative interpretation is number 12-04 for the record. That number wasn't available when the publication of the agenda occurred.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion. Motion to adopt. Do I have a second? Have a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J32.
Resolution number 7803. Resolution ratifying administrative interpretation number 12-04 attached hereto, in which staff has interpreted the deletion of the words, quote, "any display which is composed of at least 80% of on-premises display on an off-premises sign." In RMC Section 18.24.203.4570, Section 28, with respect to on-premises signs, as council's intent to delete the same words, RMC Section 18.24.203.4500, Section 23, with respect to off-premises advertising display, and instruct staff to bring forward an amendment to delete the words from RMC Section 18.24.203.4570, Section 23.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Item J4. Mr. Manager.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, for the record, Kaden Smatiyevich, Assistant City Manager. You have before you an item today to consider staff's recommendation for approval of a contract with a legislative consultant. Staff recommends that you approve the Capital Company as our legislative consultant for the upcoming legislative session. And then this, this contract actually continues. We're seeking to enter into a long-term relationship with a legislative consultant. So this contract continues through the 2015 legislative session. The terms of the contract are included in the staff report, and Mr. Griffin from the Capital Company is here to answer any questions, should you have any.
Okay. Any questions?
I just have a comment. You know, I do understand the value in establishing a long-term relationship with a lobbyist, to the degree that cities in Nevada lobby their own legislature, which is unique when I moved to Nevada, finding out, but I know all cities do it. And I also am comfortable knowing that there is a conflict of interest provision, that it is unlikely we'd see Mr. Griffin or some of his associates from his firm before this body representing, whether it's a developer or a bidder in a protest during the terms of the contract.
That is correct. There is a provision within the contract that speaks to the non-exclusive and also any conflict.
Okay.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second. Question, discussion? Anybody got a discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item J5.
Good afternoon. Robert Chisel, Finance Director, for the record. Was asked to provide a general overview and answer some questions about our bond and our bonding portfolio. Before you, I will kind of go through a number of items as I go through the bonding overview. In your packet, you should have a summary sheet, spreadsheet of the different bonds and some information on each of the bonds detailing the Moody's and S&amp;P rating, the bond, bond amount, the outstanding amount as of June 30th, 2012, the payment amount for this fiscal year, what the source of the revenue for the bond is, and the anticipated source of revenue. Also in your packet is a letter from Swenside and Sternark Bond Council. They provided a nice little summary of bond information. It talks about what the bond, different types of bonds are, how we issue bonds, federal bond rules. And one of the things I must stretch, stress is that there is bond rules that the SEC and the federal government impose upon us, because a lot of our bonds are traded on the open market. Therefore, we have to be somewhat clear when we discuss our bonds in an open forum. Otherwise, we're providing information to one party and not to another. And we need to disclose information in a fair and open manner when we're talking about bonds and their ability to be traded. So sometimes you'll, you'll hear us talk in, it sounds like we're talking in circles, but we really aren't talking in circles. We just need to be clear about revenue sources, projected revenues, and payment timing. So I will start, and, oh, and finally, there is a bond rating sheet in there that talks about what the bond ratings are from S&amp;P and Moody's. Just gives you a general idea of where, where our bonds stand. Let's see if I can get this to go. The first thing I wanted to talk about is we have a number of different types of bonds. We have general obligation bonds, revenue bonds, special assessment bonds, and RDA bonds. The RDA bonds are technically revenue bonds, but we split them out because they are a separate agency. General obligation bonds here in Nevada are kind of unique. We actually have the ability to have what's called a geo-rev bond, which is revenue is dedicated to a general obligation bond. And in addition, a general obligation... dedicated to a general obligation bond, and in addition, a general obligation bond has a full faith and credit of the city or the agency behind it, and we have about $143 million outstanding on those bonds. The other kind, which is the most common we have, is the revenue bonds, where we dedicate a set revenue stream, maybe one, maybe two revenue streams, to the payment of the bond. And we'll go into a lot more detail. That's what most of our bonds are, are those revenue bonds. That's about $380 million outstanding. Special assessment bonds are those bonds you see for the streets, the gutters, the roads, where they're self-imposed assessments on property. There's about $38 million, $36 million outstanding of those bonds. And then our RDA bonds, like I said, are primarily revenue bonds, and there are $34 million outstanding on those. Our general obligation bonds, these are our geo-bonds, and as I said, they, they're kind of geo-rev. So like the street bonds at the top actually have dedicated ad valorem for the payment of those street bonds. And all of our geo-bonds are rated AA3 by Moody's and A-minus by S&amp;P. A lot of times when you hear what the, what a agency or a city's bond rating is, that's our bond rating. That is the geo-bond rating. When we get to our revenue bonds, they will rate those bonds based on the revenue stream and how they're performing, which doesn't really rate the city, but they, they will look at other factors when they do the bond rating. But for the city, we're AA3 or A-minus for S&amp;P. Just going down, the 2004 building bond, the public plaza CDBG funds, that actually, that bond, we did an additional payment last year. So they will, are projected to actually be paid off in 12/114. They're using federal funds to pay those. There was concern about the ongoing ability to have federal funds coming due to what is happening in Washington, so we, we actually made the last payment early to get, pay down those bonds. The capital lease for fire apparatus, that is a dedicated ad valorem, that was passed a number of years ago, that's being used to pay for those bonds. The golf course refunding bond, they are supposed to be utilizing golf course revenue. As you all know, the golf course is not a money-making, it loses about $1 million a year, so it is actually using general fund revenue, not the golf course revenue. The three bonds that are mentioned there, the energy savings bonds, we actually get a small tax relief from the IRS. This was part of the ARA package that was passed a number of years ago, I think it was 2009, and there is a small possibility due to sequestration in the fiscal cliff, as you're hearing about, that some of those interest savings may be reduced or eliminated. It's less than a quarter of a percent, so it's not a huge amount, but it is at risk, and we need to let you know that there is risk there. And then finally, the sewer bonds that are using the sewer fund revenue, and that, those are, you know, I didn't go through them too much one by one, but those are general obligation bonds, pretty straightforward bonding, very typical bonds, as you'll see. Next are our revenue bonds, and I know it's probably hard to see, I'm going to go through in a little more, one by one, by the sectors of these revenue bonds. The first group is for the downtown event center, was also partially to fund the bowling stadium and the ballroom. The, let me move that little arrow. The, the room tax is supposed to be primary for those, those bonds. They are, the secondary source is C-tax, up to approximately 15% of our C-tax is then pledged behind them. Due to issues we've been having with room tax, we have been utilizing C-tax to make the bond payments. And in fact, the first bond, as you see there, the 2002 capital improvement revenue bond was, it is utilizing about a couple million dollars a year in C-tax to make those payments. And this is a good opportunity to mention that last year, or actually, it's this calendar year, the Finance Department with the Financial Advisory Board and our Bond Council went through our entire bond portfolio. We went bond through bond, looked at each of the bonds, looked at how they were issued, could they be refinanced, could they be refunded, is there another way we could restructure the bond to save the city money? This one bond, this 2002 capital improvement revenue bond, has the potential in the future, or even currently, for refunding. And that's something we'll probably be bringing back to you in January to discuss, the potential of refinancing that bond. It is using C-tax as a secondary source, which is, as you know, a general fund revenue, so there's a possibility, if we made that a general obligation bond, there would be interest savings. As you note, the interest rates there are about five and a quarter. Current rates would be a lot lower, perhaps in the three and a half to four percent range, which would save us some money. The 2005 A, Bs, and Cs were refinanced from the 2002, that's why you see the big change in the original issue amount to the outstanding amount for the 2002 being reduced. One thing to note on the 2005 A, those bonds have with them a letter of credit with Bank of America. The letter of credit is through May of 2013, so next year, so we are going to have to renew that letter of credit, and we'll begin discussion with the bank shortly on that. There is also a swap on that. The swap is to create a fixed interest rate. The swap termination fee is approximately 16 and a half million dollars, which is why that is not foreseeable to be refinanced. And that's probably, also, these series of bonds, about two weeks ago, you probably got a memo from me, the bond rating from Moody's was adjusted to the BAA2. The next ones are tenant lease and second, C-tax secondary, that's for this building. We're not, you know, renting as much as we should be in this building. That's one thing we're, we're going to try to do a better job of, so we're using about $600,000, $500,000 in C-tax to make the bond payments there. The other one, the retrac, it's room taxes, and those are just for some of the retrac projects that were done a number of years ago. These two series of bonds, they're kind of interesting bonds. We, these are both held by a bank called Depfa Bank. Depfa is an Irish bank, and actually, it is now owned by the German government. The first, both of them were for retrac, for additional projects associated with retrac. The first one is utilizing lease payments on city properties and pledged lease payments from the railroad, that the railroad pledged as part of the retrac project. The lease payments have been doing very well there. We're doing very well on those bonds. The second one down below are lease payments on the Fitzgerald's Garage, or those of us that are old timers, the Harold's Parking Garage. We, the city, own the land that the parking garage is on. Fitzgerald's or Comro owns the garage itself. Last year, we had a forbearance agreement signed with Depfa Bank and with Comro. They provided two years' worth of interest payments on the bond, which, both of these bonds are a variable rate bond that are tied to LIBOR, which is less than half a percent interest. I think it's .3%, probably approximately right now, LIBOR, so it's been doing very well. But we have a forbearance on those bonds till October of next year, where if Comro decides to, they have the option to purchase the land underneath the garage for $2.5 million. If they purchase the land for $2.5 million, the forbearance agreement and the agreement we signed with Depfa Bank would restructure both of these bonds into a single bond and be utilizing the pledged revenue and lease payments to make what is remaining of the bond payments. And based on the lease payments we're getting, we should have more than one times coverage, and that, that was, we felt, and City Council approved, that agreement. Cabela's, you hear a lot about Cabela's. There is a, what is referred to as a star bond, or a increment sales tax for those projects. There, there is two series of bonds. Those have no ratings on them because they are privately placed. Cabela's owns the bonds, and then I think sold partial of the bonds to the owners of the Boomtown. But the last several payments that have been made on them have been dipping into reserves for the last three payments actually, due to the sales tax increment not coming in as projected. However, it is important to note that these star bonds only get what is generated in sales tax increment, they get no more, no less. If they do not meet their projections, the payments do not come in, and we do not make the bond payments. It is not a default. It is not a default according to the bond ordinance, it's not a default according to the NRS. So Cabela's will get what Cabela's gets, and that's all they, they will get, and it's all totally on their sales cha, sales tax generated in the Cabela's store itself. Summit Sierra, this, we, we, this issue had come back to council, and will probably come back to council again in January. There was a $10 million bond issued. It was tied to sales tax growing at 2% for the city of Reno per year. And as everyone knows, this, from 2008, our sales tax has deteriorated quite a bit. For instance, C-tax for the city of Reno went from about $55 million a year to about $41 million a year. So the light, we are not making any payments, that is according to the agreement we signed with Summit Sierra, and they have expressed an interest in resetting the base, so that issue may come back to you in January. But at this time, we have made, are not making any payments because it is not required according to the agreement we have signed with Summit Sierra. And the project was for drainage and the roadway through Summit Sierra. A lot of people are not aware of the road that actually goes through was dedicated to the city. And then finally, the retrac bonds, this was for the retrac project itself. There were two series of bonds, the 2008 A and the 2008 Bs. They are with 1/8% countywide sales tax, are dedicated to those bonds. Currently, we have a forbearance on the 2008 Bs, so we are not making any pay, payments. The forbearance sunsets at the end of this fiscal year, June 2013. The bonds are with, the As are with Bank of New York, and Goldman's, Bs are Goldman Sachs. We also have on the 2008 A, a letter of credit that also expires in June of 2013, which we will have to negotiate an extension of the letter of credit on those items. There's also a swap on the 2008 As, and the swap termination fee on those is about $37 That's it for the revenue bonds, oops. Special assessment bonds, again, they're pretty straightforward. Couple to note that there are, the 2010 Special Assessment District Number Two was for Northgate, that was a little bit different. Usually, it's streets, sidewalks, gutters. This was for the purchase of the Northgate Golf Course. And then there was some SADs that was for the partial financing of the downtown event center and for retrac that are assessed on the downtown property owners. RDA, the RDA agency, I'm gonna go through these a little quickly. These are the downtown development projects. A lot of people have read about these. These were the bonds that we had the agreement with Washoe County, Washoe County School District, State of Nevada, City of Reno, and RDA on the appropriate allocation and distribution of the property tax increment for the RDA. All these bonds are, you know, contrary to what everyone thinks, they're fully paid, the reserves are fully replenished, the bond rating on them has been adjusted. We do not get a Moody's rating on these, but we do get an S&amp;P. The 1998 Fs are A, the S&amp;Ps were B, that was just rerated about a week or two ago. The 1998 Fs should be fully paid off in fiscal year 2018, September 2017. The 2007 As and Bs and Cs are backloaded, so they are interest-only until the 1998 Fs are paid off, and then their payments will increase, and so we're going to continue with the $2.9 million payments through probably 2028 fiscal year. And then there's also, in the RDA, RDA2, there is a small additional Cabela's bond that was done for the Cabela's project. It is using what is left of the 2000, or the RDA2 property tax increment to make those payments. And then finally, the fire station relocation loan is also in the RDA with Nevada land. It was originally set up with RDA1 and 2, tax increment, and is utilizing general fund. Again, it is a variable rate interest, it is tied to LIBOR, and so it is in quarterly payments. So that, in real quick succession, was our bonds, and be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Madam Vice Mayor, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chisel, for bringing that forward. I requested this at our last meeting, and I appreciate you getting the materials together to, to help inform us. I think, you know, I heard it once in, you know, our orientation, but I, it's so complicated, and it's, it's a big debt portfolio that I, I need to, feel like I needed to hear it again. I have a few questions. Could you define the terms forbearance, letter of credit, and swap, in the context that we're discussing?
Robert Chisel, again. Forbearance basically means we have an agreement to not make the payment. And what I'm talking about here is, we had an agreement with Goldman Sachs on the retrac bonds, saying, we're not going to have to make a payment for the next two years. We both mutually agree, we do not have to make that payment. Therefore, it's, it's not considered a default on the bond, it's not considered, you know, a causable action. We have both agreed to new terms. It's kind of an amendment to the terms of the bond, would be a better way of saying it. It's...
Is interest, is interest accruing on some of these forbearances?
Are the interest, I, I believe on the 2008 Bs, the interest is accruing. Yeah, yeah, we pushed it back, and then on the Depfa, where we, we're with Fitzgerald's or Comro, they paid the interest actually to us. It went to a, a trust and, or a, you know, it went to a second party, and they paid them, made the payments for the interest, so yes.
Okay. On the redevelopment one that you said is backloaded and interest-only, is that one interest accruing too?
Yeah, well, we're making the interest payments, that's why the payments you see are only interest payments, there are no principal.
Okay.
So that's why the bond payment stays at 4 million. We're making the interest, but we're not paying down the principal.
Yet, okay.
It's kind of an interest-only loan. If you equate it to your home loan, you got, you know, an interest-only loan.
Okay, okay. And then the term swap and letter of credit?
Well, the swap, what happened with those two bonds, those were those that had to deal with the auction rate securities that we had done. And the swap, a simple way to say it is that they, they were variable rate bonds that are, have an agree, have a swap to make them fixed. And so by making them, when, when the interest rates go down, I have to make that other party whole on what they perceive their interest would be. And because interest rates are so low now, I have to pay off to that higher rate that we had agreed upon, that 3.5%. So it's basically kind of an, and you're buying down your, your interest rates, but by paying off the loan, I have to pay them off.
I...
It's kind of confusing.
I know.
I mean, I, I, maybe, you know, I don't know, I'm looking at my, you know, I, I'm not explaining it very well, but basically, we have bought down the interest rates to get a fixed-rate note on those two loans.
Well, I thought these were credit defaults... Well, I thought these were credit default swaps where when we issued the bonds, we bought, we issued some insurance and they bought the insurance that we would stay good on the bond at the terms. And then if we don't...
The letter of credit is similar to insurance on that. What we're doing is by, we actually have a letter of credit with the bank, whether it's Bank of New York or Bank of America, on the letters of credit. And the letter of credit says, is, is kind of a guarantee to the bondholders that the bank says, "Okay, we're, we're backstopping these bonds. We have to pay for those letter of credits." So, we are, in essence, paying insurance on those bonds. That's what that letter of credit would, a simple way of saying it.
Okay, okay. You know, I understand, now, the, when we refi the 2002s, that's backstop by C-Tax, are we still gonna have to use C-Tax? And that's coming to us in January?
Yeah. If, if we restructured the 2002s as a general obligation bond, we would still be utilizing C-Tax, yes. C-Tax is a general fund revenue. It would just be at a lower interest rate. That is why we felt we're gonna bring it back in January. It's something to discuss because there, we're already using general fund revenues. Whatever we save is a general fund.
Okay. And I understand that. I guess, you know, to continue this discussion, which I think really is the most important discussion this body needs to be having, I, I would like the next time for a report, and it's not to lay blame or, or anything, to understand for the bonds minus the, minus the special assessments, minus Cabela's, minus Summit Sierra, but including the redevelopment ones with all the revenues, understanding what were the original sources and what was the original concept of that issuance? Because I think at some point, we're gonna get to a, a point where we're gonna, I mean, we're paying on these things. We're gonna have them for a long time. They're our assets. We need to understand what the concept is with them and what they're doing for us and how they're achieving or not achieving what the goals were. And so, I would like to continue, you know, thinking about the portfolio in that broad sense, almost taking it to a policy, because we do have to make very hard fiscal decisions on the, you know, fiscal side of these, but I think we also need to understand what we have and how, how it was or was not meeting the goals that we set out when we entered into these agreements.
Well, just to, all of our bonds are being paid with the revenue source that was pledged to them originally, with the exception of Nevada Land Fire Station Relocation Loan. For instance, that 2002, which had room tax, it was pledged with C-Tax to back it. When the bonds were issued, they said, "Oh, well, you know, we'll create a double backstop," you know? So, you know, it is utilizing C-Tax. I'm not sure, I wasn't here that, you know, I'm sure it wasn't envisioned that C-Tax would be utilized, but it was a pledged revenue source.
But I understand, but I, I think for some of these, we never felt we would have, or the economic analysis never showed that we'd have exposure to the general fund and we certainly do on those. And I, I think even on others, that we have created exposure to the general fund on these issuances. And, and I think, you know, that's an understanding to have. And then an understanding is, what are these? You know, what goes on in these facilities? You know, what are these property leases for retrack? You know, the homeless shelter in the Plaza, what are we doing with those? You know, and anyway, you know, some are more evident, some in my mind are not.
Mr. Manager, is that enough direction for you to, to follow through with?
Madam Mayor, I, I believe so. I'm, just to clarify, I think you're, are you looking for what the original intent of the bonds was? I mean, in other words, what they paid for? And some of that is difficult because a lot of these have been refinanced. So, to go back through the history and to try and track down what the original issuance was and what it paid for is, is a little bit challenging on some of these. And Mr. Chisel can help me if that's, and so, I'm, I guess I'm asking, are you looking for sort of what the original purpose was for the bonds?
I am. And let's take the Downtown Event Center as one, because that one, I think, came through a refi, right?
Yes.
That's been refi'd.
Yes.
That was represent that it was, and these, and a lot of these, and I'm trying to get the point where a lot of these were downtown related. Our goal to bring down, down, back downtown, which has been an admirable goal, particularly for a community with a unique downtown like ours. But the event center, you know, I want to eventually chase it back to see, is the event center being used to its full capacity to meet those downtown revitalizing, revitalization objectives that it was met, what it was intended? So, I do think we need to chase the trail on some of these and think about what we were trying to get with them and are they serving us in the way that we wanted to, particularly because we're, we've inherited them and we'll be living with some of them out to 2040. And so, I'd like to, and it'll help us think about how our assets are positioned too. I know we've had a real estate plan, but I'm not quite understanding if we're looking at these, the golf course, the Rosewood Golf Course is another one. And it was Rosewood that's paying for those, it was, green fees on Rosewood, right? Following the tail on Rosewood, there's a correspondence I've been receiving about rebuilding Rosewood and, and then it's tied into payment we've received for, you know, part of Rosewood that went away. Well, if we rebuild this Rosewood, will we be whole on those bonds then evidently?
Well, on the Rosewood Golf Course bonds, if the RTC Southeast Connector Project goes forward and causes any harm to the 18 holes, those bonds have to be paid off immediately. And we had an agreement with RTC where they provided funding that is a contingent liability that's waiting based on what happens with the Southeast Connector and the agreement we have with the RTC. And until such time as we either have the RTC project built or certain time, I can't remember the exact time, goes by, that $7.5 million is a contingent liability. The first thing that happens with that $7.5 million, when the Southeast Connector goes through, is those, these bonds have to be paid off. That is, that is a pledged revenue source and so, those would have to be either paid off or defeased because technically, they're not eligible to be paid off until 2014. So, depending on what it is, I may have to defuse the bonds, which is in essence, paying off the bonds. I guess maybe, you know, if I could just clarify what you're seeking is you'd like for each bond, what the original issue purpose was and the status of that purpose?
And the backstory to each one.
And some of those were done 10, 15 years before you got here.
Oh, yeah. And I'd like to point out, it's like the RDA bonds, actually, the 1998 Fs, you know, as part of the lawsuit, we went back and identified where the bonds were. They had been refinanced four or five times. And money pulled out, refinanced, money pulled out, refinanced. It's not gonna be as, you know, a lot of these are very clear. Like you said, the Downtown Event Center, the Downtown Event Center is very clear. You know, those series of bonds were for the Downtown Event Center. We can discuss the Downtown Event Center, but some of the others may not be as clear. And so, I just want to make sure you understand as we go through, it may not all be as clear as you think it will be.
Well, but, okay, here's another point. You mentioned those downtown ones. Those downtown ones, I think, were originally done for the riverfront walkway.
Yes.
Okay, that's aging infrastructure. And if we're out to 20, tell me something on that. You know, we're gonna start to be hearing about, and I walk down there and I see aging infrastructure that is starting to show its wear. And, you know, it's like, okay, we're paying on that infrastructure till 20, say, 25, 2027. You know, we're gonna wanna maybe replace infrastructure that we're still paying on. And I, I don't feel it's a way to blame or anything, but it's just a way to understand how to set our priorities going forward, that, boy, that would be a hard one to think about rebuilding the downtown walkway when we're still paying for it. It's an unfortunate scenario. So, anyway, the more information on the backstory of some of these bonds, what were the original, you know, purposes and, and projections? You know, how robust were the revenue sources proposed and anticipated to be? And ultimately, I feel that going forward, particularly when we get into the economic development agreements that we make with private people that have been coming forward, they all plop down their economic development projection story. And are those the same folks who on the other side were telling us that, you know, Summit Sierra was gonna be based upon 2% sales tax increase from here to out there? I, I think we need to be sure that economic analysis and projection information that comes toward this body is, is checked, backchecked and, and go through a full feedback loop on some of those studies, because that's how we look at them going forward.
Well, I think the majority of the things you're talking, one, it's gonna take a lot of time, so this whole council needs to approve it, all the research you're wanting to go into, because we're asking more than two hours of staff time. All of these projects, to the best of my recollection, had forecasts and stuff by independent people that showed us the event center, the ballroom and the bowling stadium. The bowling stadium, this year alone, will bring over 100,000 people. And the women now are coming at the same time and doing the national championship. So, personally, I think all of these three, but also, these guys voted downtown to pay for that with a room tax deal. And they all raised their own room tax to pay for these event center, the ballroom and the bowling stadium, to the best of my recollection, and you can stop me anywhere. But a lot of these things, some of this research is gonna take several hours because I know that on a lot of this stuff for the bowling stadium and different things, those go back 20, 30 years. And I'm not sure you're gonna find the original stuff that was put together on them. And I'd hate to see staff waste their time going back looking for stuff we can't find.
And I appreciate it. I understand that. Maybe, you know, with that understanding is perhaps, you know, for me as one of the new members here, writing my council bio and my priorities, is really, you know, getting a handle on our fiscal condition, you know, that we have to this date going forward. And since we do have a priority setting workshop in January, we set out our priorities for the next year, maybe that's a place for me to bring my priority of this issue and see if we can come to some agreement on how we would prioritize in a course of action.
And I think the stuff you're bringing up is very valid and stuff like that. I have no problem with it. Just sometimes it's gonna take just an awful lot of time for staff to be able to go back and research. I know that since I've been here, they've done several refinancings on different projects and stuff like that. And the real estate along the train trench, after 30, 40 years of discussing, the homeless shelter with private enterprise money was able to kick it off. And then Senator Reggio got his $5 million out of the legislature, because they had done something like that also in Las Vegas. So, the, the land we got was given to us by the railroad. And we went back and had to lobby the senators in Washington because the land should have reverted back to the federal government. And so, they had to change the law and they were able to, senators were able to get it done and changed so that they could give us that land and those type of things. But if we go forward and study and if we, if we can fine tune it of what you really want to look at, instead of just going out, I don't think you got a big enough staff unless you want to hire an outside staff.
Mr. Mayor, we, we had just asked that question of the manager and I'm not sure that we really were able to get his full response.
Thank you, Madam Vice Mayor. I just want to make a clarification on the, and Robert, you can correct me if I'm wrong. As far as our, to Councilwoman Breckus, as far as our exposure on the general fund, outside of the, the general obligation bonds, the exposure to the general fund is, is limited to those event center bonds and the C-Tax backing. Outside of that, we don't have exposure to the general fund on our bonds. So, I just want to, I want to clarify that, because I think it's, it's very important for the council and for the people listening to understand that, that our general fund is, is not in jeopardy, other than that 15% commitment on the C-Tax bonds. Again, outside of the general obligation bonds, which, I mean, that's what general obligation bonds are. And, and none of the general obligation bonds at this point, nor do, are we anticipating that there's, any of those bonds will be in distress.
But baseball's also looking at general fund.
Baseball is looking at general fund. And I guess, I just want to make the, the point that our only bonds that are exposed to general fund are those event center bonds.
The event center are the main ones that are, the 15% C-Tax, as Mr. Klinger just said. But there also is a 2003 A building bonds for this building. There is a C-Tax backstop on that and it's a couple hundred thousand dollars a year. But the C-Tax for the Downtown Event Center are the primary.
That's what you're bringing us back in January?
Correct.
Okay. So, maybe you can do some backstory on that and tell us, you know, what were the staff reports saying?
Yep.
What was it, what was the economic analysis?
Madam Mayor and Councilwoman Breckus, perhaps this is a, a future council item that we'd want to bring forward, I think as the mayor suggested, because this will take a significant amount of staff time to compile this information.
Any other questions? Thank you, Robert. It is detailed and confusing. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we're on K1. Do we have any action? I know that we received, Mr. Manager, an email from the Health Department that they need some time to check their legal, to check on an alternate. Did we have an opportunity to follow through with that? I saw that email yesterday. I don't know if you've had a chance to act on it.
Madam Vice Mayor, I have not seen that email. I don't know if Ms. Matievich has seen that or is aware of it.
They were asking for a continuance so that they could do a legal.
My apologies. Could you repeat the question?
The email that was received yesterday, I believe, that's when I saw it, from the Health Department, Dr. Isner, they need to check with their legal on the inter-local if it allows for an alternate. Did, did we follow up on that?
I apologize. I don't think that staff was copied on that email, so I wasn't aware that, I didn't receive it, but certainly, we can, we can follow up on that.
So, should we, let's continue. Yeah, let's just continue so that we can have that, that communication with them and clear that up. That's okay. I just saw it late last night. And I think you and I, Mr. Manager, were the two that were identified that it was sent to. No? Okay. All right. Any other? Okay, then we move to item L1. We have public comment from Christopher Corbett.
Honorable Reno City Council, my name is Christopher Corbett, Nevada State Coordinator for Panda, People Against the National Defense Authorization Act, the NDAA. One week ago, I spoke to this council of the threat to our constitutionally protected right to due process resulting from the NDAA's authorization in Sections 1021 and 1022 of indefinite detention and assassination of U.S. citizens and all persons on U.S. soil under military detention without charge, trial or access to legal counsel. I reiterate, the NDAA violates at least 23 Articles of and Amendments to both the U.S. and Nevada constitutions. Article 6, Section 2 of the U.S. Constitution, the Supremacy Clause states, "This Constitution and the laws of the United States which shall be made in pursuance thereof and all treaties made or which shall be made under authority of the United States shall be the supreme law of the land, and the judges in every state shall be bound thereby anything in the Constitution or laws of any state to the contrary notwithstanding," end quote. The NDAA is clearly not a federal law in pursuance of the Supremacy Clause and the Fourth, Fifth, Sixth, Eighth and Fourteenth Amendments to the U.S. Constitution. In Marbury v. Madison, the U.S. Supreme Court held that any unconstitutional federal law is null and void. In New York v. United States and Prince v. United States, the Supreme Court held that the federal government cannot compel states into regulatory service, specifically citing states' rights under the Tenth Amendment. It can be easily argued the NDAA is an unconstitutional law and therefore null and void. State and local government, including the city of Reno, under the Tenth Amendment, have the authority and responsibility of oath to nullify the unconstitutional authorizations under the NDAA and restore our constitutionally protected right to due process, resisting any attempt by the federal government to take any Nevadaan into custody under the unconstitutional authority of the NDAA. Last week, members of Panda, as part of a coalition, were instrumental in encouraging the Michigan State House to unanimously, unanimously approve NDAA nullification legislation 107 to None. Locally, we have brought NDAA nullification to the forefront of the Sparks City Council, the Washoe County Commission and the Nevada State Legislature. I expect more discussion and attention to the NDAA will result. Again, I urge the... Again, I urge the Reno City Council to place NDAA nullification on a future agenda for further discussion. If we do not stand up and protect their constitutional rights, then who will? In closing, please join the Northern Nevada chapter of Panda on the corner of First and North Virginia Street on Saturday, December 15th, from 3:00 to 5:00 p.m. for the first annual Bill of Rights Day of Celebration commemorating the 221st anniversary of the Bill of Rights. In the event of bad weather, you can find us at Java Jungle, 246 West First Street in Reno. I wish everyone here a safe and happy holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Seeing no further public comment, back to the table, items for future agenda items.
Following up on his comments, you know, I do see value in bodies that sometimes do take on these issues as, you know, legitimate to express a resolution on issue of public policy. It's done very often. I'll give a caveat on that, I grew up in the Bay Area, in the city of Berkeley, you know, Berkeley City Council was, you know, kind of known for spending more hours discussing, you know, U.S. out of El Salvador or apartheid than doing city council business, so I think it can get away from bodies, but I do think there's a role, just like we present proclamations for, you know, Diabetes Awareness Month, to also when the public comes to us, asking us to express, and usually it's an expression to another body, you know, may Governor take the Medicaid waiver, whatever, that we do, you know, consider and maybe at times among ourselves come to agreement that we would like to express through resolution a position. And I would like, though, if we were to do something like that, that we would maybe say we'd only have these discussions quarterly or no more than 15 minutes discussion, if we can get, you know, a majority to agree that we would, you know, and have a resolution before us, we would go with it. But I do see value in the way he's presenting this practice to this body, and with the new majority, maybe it is time to think about some different and new rules of operation because I don't think this body has done a whole lot of these sort of resolutions in the past.
Any discussion? Actually, I think it's been a bit to the contrary, we've actually used some of our BDRs in the past for home rule, and that perhaps has been part of the thinking, don't know, but we certainly have sought home rule in the past through the legislature.
Madam Mayor, Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, this is identification of items for a future agenda, so certainly any council member can do that, and discussion and deliberation should occur at the time it's on a future agenda.
You know, at an undefined date, I think, and I, so I wouldn't push it to January, I think there should be an item discussing the practice of this body in responding to citizen requests for us to express through resolution format positions of a particular proposition, so I'll just leave it at that. I think maybe there'd be some research in the ICMA or something on city practices related to responding to requests of this nature, and so, you know, maybe I can do that research too, but that's, that's an item I would like to see on the agenda in the future.
Any others? Mr. George?
Yeah, Mr. Olberg brought up the issue of his trees, and I think we had a memo on that, didn't, we did some research on that and had a memo on that or something? Someone went out to his place? Does anyone know from staff? I don't know that I necessarily want an agenda item, but has he been, has anyone talked to him since we went out and?
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, we actually, both myself and John Flansburgh, went out to his property, met with him, and then our city surveyor went out and surveyed in the easements. I will follow up and report back to the council on where we are with addressing his concern. I think it may be a question of, you know, what trees are where and what trees are entitled to be there, and so we'll, we'll follow up with him.
Yeah, if we could just get, and I just threw a memo right now, Bill, and, I mean, if we need an agenda item future, we will, but I don't think we do.
Okay.
As long as, as long as we just get a memo on what's going on with that again, just and maybe even update the new council members as to, as to that issue.
We'll do that, yes.
Thanks, Bill.
Any other items? Okay, move on to liaison reports, L2. Anyone have any? No? Any from professional conferences and meetings?
I'll just let others know that I plan on attending the National APA Conference in Chicago in 2013, it's part of my, you know, I am a planner and I need some continuing education credits, I think it's going to be a very, always a very informative conference, and they have a track for elected officials, and, you know, for those who are looking to bone up on their land use development, zoning, you know, these kind of issues, it's, it's a good forum.
Okay. Anyone else? No? We will recess this meeting of the city council and open the meeting for, of the joint, oh, we're not 3 o'clock yet, we'll be in recess for 10 minutes. We will return, the city council will return at 6:00 tonight for a public hearing that is, also has a request for a continuation.
Now we can take a seventh inning stretch.
City Council and the Redevelopment Agency, December the 12th. Madam Secretary, call the roll, please.
Shivi?
Here.
Breckus?
Here.
Zadra?
Here.
Delgado?
Here.
George?
Here.
Jarden?
Here.
Cashell?
Here.
Scott?
Here.
All right. We have several people that want to speak, it's my understanding that this might be continued until a later date, but we'll go through and let people speak. Ed Hawkins? Public comment, excuse me. Excuse me, well, wait, huh?
They marked the item for public comment.
Public, public comment.
For the record, Ed Hawkins, just a regular old citizen that wants you to keep the ballpark. At this point, after listening to Mr. Chisel earlier, we're exposed to $2.6 million in debt service for the Reno Event Center that might or might not get refinanced later. Consider that, consider the $200 million we owe on the train trench, and then also think about, we're really only paying $150,000 out of the coffers, general fund, for the next eight years until we refinance the baseball debt. So it's not a million, you're paying 750 already for the moveal of the two firehouses, eight years approximately, that's a hun, and you've got another 100 in there to play with. We're actually coming up for $150,000 over eight years while we pay off the firehouse moveal, so I'd hate to see what to do downtown Reno if we don't go through and keep the ballpark and renig on what we've already made an obligation for, it's just, I'm just reiterating that we have to be wise, yes, it's going to cost us a couple bucks, but we're going to make so much more when we stick with our obligation. Thanks.
Thank you. Chris Olberg?
Chris Olberg, like one residents, I've been trying for 15 years to get speed bumps on Scottsdale Road, which I built above Home Depot. Monday night, there was the eighth major accident on our street. They've taken out the neighbors' mailboxes, guys have gone through garage doors, they just totaled another car, there was another one eight months ago, it's just an ongoing problem. These people are going 70 miles an hour down a public road. Are we going, and we've tried to work to get this done. When I built the street, I even offered to pay to put them in, and I ran into an issue because it slows down the fire department. The only reason the fire department is there is because people keep crashing into each other. So why don't we slow down the cars so the fire department doesn't have to show up? And this is a serious issue. I mean, the guy's car's totaled, and the last guy that did it tried to drive around the corner and hide his car in the garage, except for the transmission fluid came all the way to his driveway. We need to do something about Scottsdale Road. They're going so fast that it is amazing, and I guess I'll go ahead and be rude, you're on notice, when a little kid gets killed, it's your fault, because I know all you guys live in neighborhoods, and I'll bet you some of you had speed bumps or traffic calming devices, something's got, we have a park, Melly Lane Park, which I helped instrumentally build. We got to slow these people down before somebody gets killed.
All right, I have no other public comment, I've got people who want to speak on the item, and we'll call them up when we get to the item, so I'm going to close the public comment section. Go for approval of the agenda. Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
A second, all in favor say aye. Those that no, motion carries unanimously. Item D, approval of the minutes, November 7. Motion? Motion? All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those that oppose no, motion carries unanimously. Item E1, we have people who want to speak, Mark Glenn or Clint?
Thank you, Mark Glenn, citizen of Reno. The subsidy for the ACES baseball team makes sense for the club's owners and downtown interests, but not the citizens of Reno. If it made sense financially, they would not be here asking for assistance, but of course, after they have seen the hundreds of millions of dollars our city council has given away in the form of redevelopment districts, star bond projects, and of course the Apple deal, it's understandable why they think they can get a bigger slice of the pie. Companies across the country are using the competitive race between local governments to strike increasingly hot deals for themselves at the expense of local taxpayers. In these challenging economic times, politicians naturally want to do things that make themselves look good to the public and to the voters without explaining the cost ramifications to those who are paying the bill. Is it better to give a million dollars a year to support baseball, or perhaps it could be better spent on education, public safety, or something else that benefits the general public? This council isn't responsible for the mistake that the previous council made in this giveaway. You are responsible if the situation is not corrected. If the baseball stadium is that important, then the 5,000 people that attend a game can pay more for a ticket. Since downtown interest also want it, then how about going to those in the downtown redevelopment district and see if they're willing to pay a tax to fund it? The December 2nd New York Times has a front page article called "The Empty Promise of Tax Incentives." I would share one quote out of the article from Sarah Eckhart, a county commissioner in Travis County, Texas, and who has also recently negotiated a deal with Apple, and I quote, "We don't have the sophistication or the resources to negotiate with a company that has a wherewithal the size of a country. We are just no match in negotiating with that." The other issue is that it's just not fair to give large handouts to one business entity over another. At the same time, we should be striving to make it easier and less costly for all businesses that want to expand or start up. The companies who need assistance the least are the ones that are getting rich at the public trough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chase Daniels? Chase?
Mr. Mayor, Ted Levatter for the record, can I help the city avoid another open meeting laws violation? When you take a public comment on an agenda item, it should come after the staff report and discussion from city council, and that's from the Attorney General's Open Meeting Laws Manual published July of this year. I have it here with me if you would like to review it, but that is-
You can give it to the attorney.
Yeah, you should have staff report and discussion before.
Give it to attorney. Mr. Daniels?
Hi, my name is Chris Daniels, I'm a Reno resident. I just want to, first of all, say how much I appreciate the council taking up this issue and reexamining it and refocusing on it. I work for a nonprofit here in Reno, and I primarily work with at-risk youth, and I see that their needs are not being met on a most basic level, whether it comes to home, safety, food, education, opportunities in the future, whatever the case may be, I see that their needs are not being met on a daily basis. And so it concerns me a little bit that general funds are being used for the Reno ACES baseball game, our baseball stadium. I think that that money should be used and invested into our youth, who are really suffering right now, who do not have places to congregate, to hang out, who don't have a lot of opportunities, who do not have a lot of things at their disposal. I think we could use this money in so much more in enriching and investing in our community and in our city than necessarily the baseball stadium. Thank you.
Thank you. Ted? Okay. I'll hold him, Kimberly Tolkien?
Good afternoon, council members, my name is Kimberly Tolkien, I am a Reno resident, and I'm here to voice my concern as well about general fund monies going to developers with much deeper pockets than we have here at the city level. We have way bigger items that we need to fund, we have way bigger issues, it's not a good thing for us to be taking money out of the general fund that could be used for other purposes than to help someone who has a lot bigger purse than we do. Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, I'm going to really bush you, Joe, I apologize. I'm not even going to try it.
All right, it's Tag Lieber, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Tag Lieber?
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, council members, I think this is an important juncture for us to look at, what is the real economic impact and benefit to us having the ACES here? You know, a few seasonal jobs that are not regular, that doesn't provide any long-term sustainability or growth to this economy, surrounding bars and restaurants getting added patronage because of the stadium, you know, bars and restaurants are a dime a dozen in this town, and if they need the ACES stadium to survive, well, I look at it as survival of the fittest, you know, and also, the city, I urge the city to look at current professional and academic research that suggests that the public ends up losing out in these deals and these scenarios, and to strongly look and do their homework and their research in moving forward to see what is the real benefit to the citizens of this community. I thank you.
Thank you. Mark Sullivan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, Mr. Klinger and Mr. Scott, appreciate you, I'm going to take a bunch of your time today, I'm going to be brief, which I know, those of you that know me, know how challenging that is for me. I've been reading through the documents that I've seen since 2007, all the way through the documents that we currently have today on the baseball deal, and it's over 1,000 pages, and I've been looking at it for a couple of weeks, and it's just absolutely mind-blowing to try and get your mind wrapped around what's transpired to date, it's like trying to drink out of a fire hose. And I, so I am sympathetic to the new council members that are also trying to understand what's going on, and I, I've talked to people, I mean, I support baseball, I'm, I like baseball games as much as the next guy, I'll go have a beer and a hot dog and watch a game on a warm afternoon, it's wonderful, I think it's a great asset to our community, I think there's a lot of benefits to it. I've also talked to other people that absolutely think baseball's a great thing for our community, and they think that there's a lot of benefits to having it here, and I think there's a lot of misconception about what actually is going on, though, I mean, and you heard the comment earlier from somebody who said, "Well, it's only an extra $150,000." Well, that's part of the challenge, you know, it's $150,000 extra outside of what's currently being paid, and it's probably going to be paid for another four, five, six years maybe to pay off the firehouse debt, and then it expands, and then it runs out a lot longer, and we don't know that that debt's going to get paid, maybe 400,000 a year gets paid to the fire station, maybe none of it gets paid, it depends on what ends up happening with the tax increment. So there's a lot of complex ideas that are going on in these, in these documents, and I just think that everybody would like to keep baseball here, I think the primary focus, at least it appears to me from the staff, has been to try and make the deal happen, and I think that what really ought to happen is that we should just look at it very carefully. I think there's a lot of options out there that we could, probably could pursue if we had more time to look at them. I don't think the timeframe is this urgency that has been proposed with regard to the loan and the financing, you're looking at a year out, the threat, whether it's a threat or not, I don't know, but the suggestion that the baseball team is moving, I think is kind of odd to begin with, we've been so supportive of baseball, and if they would just leave, I just find that shocking. So what I would ask you guys to do is just take a careful look, and we should explore all the options for funds that we have available, and make the best deal that we can for all the parties involved. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. Jessica Levetti?
Mr. Mayor, in all due respect to your role as the presiding officer, the attorney's returned after her discussion with Mr. Levatar, Levatter, and I'm just wondering if she, you wanted to ask her if there is any merit to his point that maybe we could be, you know, not following the open meetings law?
Tracy Chase, Reno City Attorney's Office, we believe your agenda does follow open meeting law, you provide comment at the beginning of the agenda and at the end of the agenda, and that's what is required under the open meeting law. The public comment on this item is extra public comment.
Okay, Jessica?
Hello, my name is Jessica Levetti, I'm a Reno resident. I'd like to start off my three minutes by first admitting something, I am Ted Levatter's little sister. Please, don't let that freak you out, I have significantly less free time than my brother does, so I won't be bothering you too often, and I get the sense that maybe my brother annoys the council a little bit, and he is, I mean, he's my brother, he is a little bit annoys- I mean, he's my brother, he is a little bit annoying. But I think if anything, before we get to the, my point on the baseball issue, is that we should be encouraging Ted because he is, I mean, he's an active participant, and that's why you guys are here. And I think maybe a little more open environment might encourage other people like myself to step up to speak. So even though he is annoying, I do give my brother mad props. He's doing a lot of work in his free time. In fact, so much work and research that you guys should be paying him. Actually, I wish you would, because he owes me rent. That's another point. Anyway, he has done a really amazing job of giving me the Reader's Digest of what's going on with this baseball issue, and I think what he has to say is pretty amazing. I am the Public Service Director at Wilkes Broadcast, and just today, I was interviewing a nonprofit in this town that currently lost funding from the city, and today, resources that they need to provide a space for homeless, homeless youth in Reno are being taken away. Right now, as I'm speaking, city workers are in there taking their stuff away. So I'm left wondering, does this city value sports, or does this city value its children? Because with, I'm a taxpayer, where is my money going? Why are we using general fund money to fund a baseball stadium when this is one of the worst counties in this country for education, teen pregnancy, and homeless youth? These kids are living out of their cars. And Project Solution is the name of the nonprofit, if anyone is interested. So I would just like to encourage the city to maybe make a list of their top 10 values. Maybe even the city council can make a list of their 10 values as a group, and every decision you make should go back to that list of values hanging on the wall somewhere. Is this decision in line with our values, or is it not? Thank you.
Thank you. Ted, we're not gonna hold that against you. Come on up.
Yeah, hardly any match for that, and I will happily go over what open meeting law I was referring to later. There's no shortage of topics I could have chose to spend my valuable three minutes on today. I have hours of research and analysis into the stadium agreement, open meeting laws, economic development, but today I've decided to take my three minutes to talk to you guys about baseball. A lot of you don't know this, but I grew up playing the game of baseball. I have hundreds or thousands of hours on the field. I played from the time I was five until I graduated from high school. My first job was umpiring Little League baseball. Actually, after I moved out to Reno, I umpired Little League baseball for two seasons here. During my time, time in Montana as a ski bum, in my small town of 1,000 people, I was head Little League coach for one of our two Little League teams. Suffice it to say, I love baseball. And it could be safe to say that without baseball, I wouldn't be standing in front of you today. Baseball has taught me about teamwork, leadership, communication, dedication, patience, how to celebrate the wins and how to shake off the losses. Baseball is a game that teaches us about the best things that we have in ourselves and builds our strength of character. Yet of all the lessons I learned from the game of baseball, not one of them was learned from watching the game played professionally. The only lessons I ever learned from watching the game played professionally is that even millionaires can be greedy, and that if you take enough steroids, you can be a Hall of Famer, too. Ladies and gentlemen, we are not here today to talk about baseball. We are here today to talk about billion-dollar-a-year sports entertainment monopolies, and what is appropriate for one city to sacrifice in order to provide its most privileged citizens with the opportunity to consume this particular brand of sports entertainment. Anytime you talk about sacrificing or exchanging, intrinsically, like my sister pointed out, it comes down to a question of values. Every choice you make is based on a set of values. Every choice is a statement declaring what's important to you, what you stand for, and what you cannot stand. The question in front of you today is not one about the merits of baseball, it's a question of ideals. What are the principles this town needs to uphold in order to secure a bountiful future for all of us? It's the leadership you are elected to provide. Good leaders always lead from a clearly communicated set of core values. No matter what decision you make here today, you will send a clear message to the people of this town and anybody else who's watching what the core principles of our town are gonna be moving forward. The question is, do we value financial security over foul balls? Housing assistance over home runs? Education over earned-run average? And most importantly, do we value our people over professional sports entertainment? When you're asked to spend general fund dollars on this baseball project, know that you're doing so in sacrificing meeting, or God forbid, exceeding the basic needs of the people of our community. If you allocate this money, know that you're doing it at the detriment of people who could never attend a game. If you allocate this money, you're doing, you're saying to the kids in our community that even though we're giving them an education rank 49th in the country, we consider sports entertainment more important than their education. If you're gonna spend $30 million of taxpayer money, spending, spend it on something that teaches us about teamwork, leadership, communication, and dedication. Spend it on something that teaches us about building our character and making us into the best people we can be. Thank you.
Ted? All right. Having no other public comment, I'm gonna bring it back to the table. Did you, you already made one comment. You're gonna talk on that? Okay, come on, come on. I do. I got them confused.
Chris Hoiberg, I am astounded that we have already given these people $58 million to build a stadium, and we gave them dirt for a dollar. And now they're coming back here crying when they charged $9 for a beer and $7 for a hot dog. It's like any other business adventure. If you can't make it, you can't make it. And if you have any questions, for those of you that have been around long enough, where are the Silver Sox? Where are the Reno Rattlers? And why are we tearing down Moana Ballpark? This thing doesn't work. And we're gonna let nine guys in penetrate suits get our money when we need schools, policemen, firemen, and speed bumps. And these people are getting filthy rich. I said it before you guys even started to do this thing. It's not gonna work. Hey, there's a building across the street. Why don't, that's, whoa, it's been vacant for how long? Let's give them $10 million. Or let's give Cabela's $54 million. Let's give Shields $110 million. Let's give Sierra Summit $12 million, 'cause they ran out of money. And they're all making money, but they don't pay us back, and then they don't pay taxes. I mean, it's absurd. It's, it is, to me, it's totally absurd that we're even considering saving these people. If people want to go watch baseball, double the price of tickets and double the price of beer, because I'm not going there. I don't care about baseball. I care about my community. That's why I helped so hard to build a park and a nice neighborhood. We don't need to spend this money. This is absurd. And if you allow it to happen, then you should all resign.
Thank you very much. I have no other public comment cards. I'm gonna close the public comment section, bring it back to the table. Ms. Jordan, Jordan?
Um...
I've never called you by your name before. I've always been Naomi.
You can still call me that if you like.
I'll have to figure, I'll have to get it down. I'll get it down.
You'll get it right.
Okay.
Um, since many of us on the council were only inducted one month ago, this is a very complicated deal with lots of moving parts. And while we've dedicated significant time to better understanding this refinance agreement, there's still work to be done. And we want to make sure that we thoroughly negotiate the best deal for our constituents. In addition, based on the county's decision last night to stall their decision until after hours, we need time to understand what the next steps are in case the county doesn't approve an agreement. So we appreciate everybody's comments, and we'll continue to listen to them. I certainly appreciate the emails and the phone calls and the public comment, and we encourage additional input. We're listening, and we're taking the ideas to the negotiation. So with that, I'd like to make a motion to continue the financial restructuring of Reno Aces baseball stadium project, so we may keep this a top priority to reach a resolution in a timely manner.
Okay, do I have a second? Second discussion?
I'd like to provide a little comment, since we did put this on the agenda and aren't having a lot of involved discussion up here. I appreciate the folks who are, got in touch with us and have come forward on this. I appreciate particularly Mr. Sullivan's comments on exploring options, and I continue to, you know, hope that we'll do so. We, for disclosure, we did meet with the baseball people. I met with them. First time I had met them and heard their side of the story. They weren't here today, but I guess they were at the county last night, kind of laying out their, their concerns and issues. That's right, right? Were they at the county? Okay. And I continue to remain very concerned about general fund, funds being committed to this deal.
Any other comments?
I would just like to add, too, that we are working towards negotiating the best deal possible for, in consideration of the taxpayers, the general fund, while at the same time, trying to do level best to keep baseball here, keep the stadium alive, and limiting the impacts on the very delicate nature of the city's finances. So I don't think anybody at this dais would, would disagree that we love baseball. We love the stadium. We just want to make sure that we are doing what's in the best interests of our entire community.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Go to item F, a dedication for future agenda items. Anybody got anything? All right. Public comment section. Any public comments cards? Okay. My favorite motion, adjournment. Motion and second. All in favor say aye? Aye. Those that oppose, no. Motion carries unanimously. Ladies and gentlemen, the Reno City Council will reconvene at 6:00 PM on the McCarran Center UNR Farms. The center manager, the city manager requesting that this item be opened and continued to January the 30th, 2013 council meeting. So we'll be adjourned until 6 o'clock.
Madam Secretary, has proper notice been given?
For the record, proper notice was given. No correspondence was received.
Thank you. And this item is gonna need to be referred back to the Planning Commission because of a noticing issue, and did you want to address that?
Thank you, council members. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. As was discussed at Monday's caucus meeting, there was a noticing error on this case. Our staff is recommending that the planning, that the council refer this item back to the Planning Commission. They could hear this at their January 2 meeting and be brought back to the council on the January 30th council date.
Okay, and I, and I do have a couple of people that wish to speak. I mean, if you can't speak at the, the January 2 Planning Commission meeting or the January 30th City Council meeting, you're more than welcome to speak tonight. So I do have a couple of people that still submitted cards. If anyone else does want to speak, because they can't make those meetings, please go ahead and submit your cards. Doug Bustelman?
I will be back in a second.
Okay, thank you. And Ann Luella?
Oh, Loella?
Loella?
I will be back in a second, too.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else present that won't be able to attend the other meetings that wants to be heard tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close the public comment section. Mr. Delgado?
So I move to refer this...
Before you do, Marilyn Craig, Deputy City Attorney. Would you call for disclosures to make sure that we get that on the record first before you do your motion?
Sure, disclosures?
Let me, yeah, I'd like to do one. So as a member of the Neighborhood Advisory Board, meeting back in October 20, 2011, the zoning map amendment came before the NAB. When I was a member, we heard information from staff, developer, and citizens. A NAB will provide concerns to the city council and though, does not take direct action on these matters in regards to the item. I had concerns about further development on open natural space, because there were several vacant commercial spaces within the proposed community and around the city. I also attended the UNR outreach, where I obtained more information but did not make comment in the meeting. As part of my campaign, I discussed the issue with citizens and raised my concerns about the project, which included open space issues, flood, impossibility, and commercial development. I would like to have more information on whether the southeast connector would bring more commercial to the area, whether this, the zoning of the UNR Farms. I'm open to, open-minded to hearing more information as this progresses, and that should be it.
Okay, any other disclosures?
I have no disclosures. I have questions.
You have questions on tonight's?
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, I have not been too informed or involved on this, but I have a question. I understood at caucus that this was sent, you know, the reason for the long stretch of this continuance of this item was for the university to have meetings, and I'm just wondering, is the application before us changed in any material way from what was presented to the council when they first saw this?
Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, you should have received a memo outlining the outreach that the university has done.
And really, I mean, I think the key, too, is, I mean, the process is basically restarting. They have to go back to the Planning Commission, go through that process, and come back to us. So, I mean, any changes, if there are any, would be brought forward at that point in time.
Oh, okay.
That's correct. This, this would have to be heard anew. That being said, though, the, the part of the delay, the request, the initial request for continuance was to do public outreach. You should have received a memo from the university outlining the outreach that they did with, with concerned stakeholders. But we will present that anew when, when this comes back.
Okay. So the purpose was for, you know, some conversations to occur, and I'm just wondering, did the applica, did the proposal, has there been a response, a change to application? I mean, I understand they have to hear it anew because of a notice failure, which is concern of itself, you know, on how business is being done, a notice failure, you know, you know, a meeting failure, open meeting failure. I mean, I'm hearing a lot of process sort of issues of concern to me, but has, has the university in any way respond, or the university, I guess, is the applicant, have they responded and changed their proposal?
The proposal itself has not changed.
Unchanged. Okay, so in a 10-month period, they had meetings, but they're still presenting down to the Planning Commission, basically what the Planning Commission heard back in... When did the Planning Commission first?
November of 2011.
Okay, so then November of 2011, the Planning Committee, the Planning Commission took an action recommending approval of the university's request. The university, you know, is it, is it, who, who, is it university, University Farms? I mean, who's the applicant? Is it the System for Higher Ed?
The university.
The university in Vatirino. Okay. So the university in Vatirino had all these meetings, but has unchanged their application, and the Planning Commission is gonna hear that whole application anew. Is the staff gonna do a new staff report, a new analysis?
The, all the, all the original information will be provided for the Planning Commission with an update of, of the process.
Okay, so same, same staff report, and everything goes to the Planning Commission?
Correct.
Again?
Correct.
Yeah. Have there been any, I know, you know, some of the issues that you look up are changed conditions. Have there been any changed conditions in the area and the environment?
Not, not that we're aware of.
Okay, okay.
Is that it? Okay. Oscar?